Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 30th, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting, uh, minute, meeting. We're going to start right off with a executive session. As soon as the executive session's over, hopefully right around seven o'clock, we'll go right back into open session and start the regular agenda. So I'll accept a motion to go into-
I'll make a motion to-
Enter into executive session.
No, you got it.
Oh, we have the per-
Okay.
Right in front of me. Okay. Motion to enter into executive session for union negotiation and strategy discussing regarding contracts for the local 379-MCOP AFL-CIO United Steel Workers, Unit A and Unit B, Local 1702, AFSCME-GPW, and Boyd &amp; Library Employee Association, and convene in open session.
Reconvene.
Recon- I'm sorry, reconvene in open session.
Second.
Okay. For executive session, we need a roll call vote.
Chris, yes.
Leah, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ed, yes.
See all in an hour. Welcome back, everybody. Good evening. Once again, welcome to the Tuesday, March 30th, 2021 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes. Our executive session really didn't go too late, so hopefully we'll be right back on schedule. Steph, why don't you lead us in the pledge script?
I'd be honored.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Christina, I know you're going back to your chair. Anyone for citizens input?
Not until later on, for the public-
It's all later on. Okay. Good. We'll go to the collective bargaining agreement vote. Our executive session was about contracts. We are going to vote on those contracts now. So, Steph?
Motion to approve the MOA between the town and local 379-MCOP AFL-CIO from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2020.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the MOA between the town and the United Steelworkers, Local 9517, Unit A, from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the MOA between the town and United Steelworkers, Local 9517, Unit B, from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the MOA between the town and local 1702, AFSCME-DPW, from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the MOA between the town and the local Boyd &amp; Library Employee Association from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Yeah, I mean, we've said it in the executive session, but I'm going to say it in open session. Mike did a yeoman's job getting this many contracts to us right before, plenty of time before town meeting, to get them approved at town meeting. Great job, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
And thanks to the employees, too, for reaching those agreements as well.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, thanks.
I don't want to lose sight of that. No, we appreciate the unions' cooperation in this as well. Thank you.
Both sides, absolutely.
Thank you. But great job, Mike.
And moving on with the agenda, we're going to do a normal COVID-19 update.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I wanted to just give you a brief update. First of all, we still remain in the yellow area, yellow condition. Currently, though, we have 63 cases that we're tracking, which is seems a little bit high compared to what it was just even just a week ago, which was like something in the 30s. So, but it has been a little bit of a spike, and it has, and we've seen a spike happen nationwide, and so we're starting to track that and keep closer attention, pay closer attention to it. Currently, the town of Foxborough is in the yellow category. The town's average daily incidence rate, as defined by the state, is moderate, while we average 20.8 cases per day per 100,000 residents over the last 14 days, which is slightly higher. In addition, the percent positivity rate is moderate, at 2.94%, slightly higher as well. These slightly higher numbers have been contracted, contributed to the new COVID-19 variants, which have given greater, which have a greater transmission rate than the previous version of it. Vaccination update, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health reports as of March 29th, 2021, a total of 3.4 million case vaccinations have been administered throughout the state. In addition, Governor Baker has announced the launch of a Homeland Vaccination Program to provide in-home vaccinations to individuals who cannot leave their homes even with support, even with supports, to get a COVID-19 vaccination. In-home vaccinations will be available to homebound individuals who have considerable difficulty and are required significant support to leave the home for medical appointments, require an ambulance or two-person assistance to leave their home, or are not able to leave home for medical appointments under normal circumstances. As part of this program, Foxborough homebound residents will be referred to our local Council on Aging, who will be creating a list of eligible individuals. These individuals will then receive vaccinations through the Foxborough Fire Department once they become available. Lastly, the Federal Emergency Management Agency has recently announced that, starting March 31st, 2021, an additional 6,000 federal doses of COVID-19 vaccine will be available at the Heinz Convention Center as part of the federal community vaccination program. People interested in booking the appointment, booking an appointment at Heinz Convention Center vaccination site should continue, should continue to pre-register at the vaccinesignup.mass.gov. Under the travel order, Massachusetts travel order has been replaced with a travel advisory. The new travel advisory urges all persons entering Massachusetts, including returning residents, to quarantine for 10 days upon their arrival if they have been out of the state for 24 hours or more. The advisory does not apply to anyone in the following categories: anyone who is returning to Massachusetts after an absence of fewer than 24 hours, travelers who have a negative COVID-19 test result that have been administered up to 72 hours, or from, or from, or from while they're, while they're at work, I'm sorry, or prior to their arrival in Massachusetts, workers who enter Massachusetts to perform critical infrastructure while they are commuting to and from, from their work, and travelers who are fully vaccinated, i.e., who have received two doses of either the Moderna or Pfizer COVID-19 vaccines, or who have received a single dose from the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, 14 days or more, or more ago, and who do not have the symptoms. Under the reopening Massachusetts update, the state is currently in step one of phase four of the Massachusetts reopening plan. This week, the Executive Office of Health and Human Services and respective agencies released a series of new guidance documents as part of the Massachusetts reopening plan. For further information about the updated guidelines and business standards, please visit the Massachusetts reopening page at mass.gov. And I want to thank Matt Brennan for providing me with this latest information update, information he's received from the state and is provided by the Board of Health. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions about the update? Do we have Chief Callahan? We're a tad early, he might not be-
We do not, but if you have to wait for him and have go-to-
He just texted me.
That's Jeff for the next item, right here.
Yes, Jeff Pena for the next item.
Okay, well, tell-
You have to go to emergencies. He had an emergency, had to go to, and he's on the way back now.
Tell him to text.
Whenever he gets here.
Yeah.
Tell him not to drive and text, though.
That's right. Turn the lights off.
All right. Yeah, we'll skip Chief Callahan for now, and as Leah said, the, we'll go for the common vic license, Foxborough Nutrition.
Can they hear us? Can we hear them?
Did you guys hear us?
Yes.
Ah, there you go.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. How you doing?
Doing very well. My name's Jeff Pena, and I'm coming before you folks this evening, looking for a approval of a common viculist license, so I can open Foxborough Nutrition on 50 Central Street in town.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about what you plan on doing.
So, Foxborough Nutrition is going to be a nutritional smoothie and energizing tea store. Myself, as well as my girlfriend, have four other locations throughout the state of Rhode Island. We've been doing this for six years now, and the, the style of it is, you know, almost set up like a little smoothie cafe. People are going to be able to come in and purchase nutritional protein shakes, as well as energizing teas. They're going to be able to take their purchase and either sit at a little table and enjoy it there, or take it and continue on with their day. We also like to get very involved with the community, whether it be with the local high schools, or any of the athletic programs that are throughout town. We're always giving back to the community and doing work within the community itself.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board?
I just have to say, Jeff has already joined the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative. He just dove right in. He's not even open yet, but he's, he's, he dove in, and he's joined those meetings, and it seems like he's going to be a great addition to Uptown, and one of the members even traveled down to Rhode Island to get a shake, and there was good reviews, so.
Yeah.
This is really exciting. I think everyone's really excited about this.
Yeah, I know Jeff, when you called me a year ago or so, I think it was even before COVID, it was a very exciting concept. Just to refresh my memory, though, which, which building is 50?
Bradley Child's.
Oh, okay.
And the barber shop going there, so that little corner, I feel like, is really coming to life, so it's exciting to see.
Yeah.
Oh, we're going to be popping off.
Yeah, I can't wait.
Yeah, Jeff, I just want to give you credit for having four businesses already and keeping them afloat over the last year, and starting another one during this pandemic, so good luck.
Hey, thank you very much. We're very, very fortunate for our success, and we, we look to pretty much duplicate everything that we've done throughout Rhode Island and the town of Foxborough, and we're beyond excited.
When do you hope to open?
We're looking to open the middle of summer. I actually just picked up a "coming soon" sign today that was printed by our graphic design team, and I'm going to be up in town this week so that I can hang it in the windows. And as long as I get the approval from you wonderful folks, we look to start pulling our permits, so we can start our renovations within the next week or so.
Awesome. And Jeff, can we give a plug to your Instagram if people want to check out, what is it, New Level Nutrition RI or something?
Yes. So our, our store that's in Smithfield, Rhode Island, that's been open for six years, that's New Level Nutrition RI. We actually have a very, very powerful, dynamic duo with Bryant University, and a lot of the students that come in are from the Foxborough area, and that's actually how we found this great location, so we're very excited. But you can follow us at New Level Nutrition RI, and we also did just create a Foxborough Nutrition Instagram. It's Foxborough Nutrition, but it's spelt with the UGH.
Great.
Awesome. Welcome to town.
Yeah. Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, Steph?
Motion to approve the 2021 common vic license for Foxborough Nutrition.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Looking forward to trying you.
Welcome.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
All right.
All right. Good night.
Have a great night.
All righty. I don't know how Chief can get away with saying he had an emergency, but all right.
He's two minutes, he's two minutes late. I say we kick him out.
Wait till the end.
It did call lifeline. He was going to present it, but yeah.
Come on up, Chief, you're all-
I'll try to be brief.
Okay. So, we're kind of a victim of our own success here. So I work in a very small industry, and a lot of people talk, and the words got around about our apparatus maintenance program in the town of Franklin. Fire chief all but begged if we'd take him on as a, as a, another town, so I know we had, we had some discussions. It's been a couple of months, it's worked out very, very well. It's really, it's not a, it's not a heavy lift, so we think we can manage it for sure. If you looked at our budget proposal this year, I think we, it's, we're somewhere between a quarter and a half a percent increase, where usually that's two and a half to three, or two to three percent increase in our expense budget, so it's already kind of paying dividends because we're expecting that, that revenue to keep that number down, so that's kind of, that was it. It's just to enter into municipal agreement with the town of Franklin as well, so.
Awesome. I know Chris at one point, your concern was-
Yeah, I definitely was the one that, that brought it up, and I have to give Mike huge kudos for reaching out to me at the beginning when, when he became aware of this, and him and I met, and kind of went over my concerns, and, and, you know, he, he gave me some good numbers, good statistics. It really doesn't, what they're doing now doesn't take that much time, and the ROI right now is, was like 48%.
Forty-eight percent, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, that definitely put me at ease. And, and like I said, everything Mike has done since he got here has been the right decision, and so I kind of put it on him. I'm like, do you think this is the right thing to do? I'm satisfied.
This is three towns, right, Chief?
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're going to need a bigger garage.
I need a bigger boat. All right?
Motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Franklin.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just under discussion, I saw the agreement in our docs in like a draft form. I saw a couple of minor edits that need to be made, so I can, I'd like Christina to know.
Yeah, that'd be great, because it was, I was trying to finish it up this afternoon. They haven't run a city former government, too, so there was some changes I needed to-
Yeah, that was just, as we were changing things out, there was a couple of words that-
Perfect.
Were there that should just come out. Doesn't make sense anymore, so.
No problem.
All right.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
But we still have to vote.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can't wait to get out of this.
Now you do.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on the agenda, five minutes early, okay to start, I think. What do you think? Everybody seem like everybody's zoomed in, Christina?
It looks like it, and that's the list that you, that you've listed, the people who are attending for Shovel Town, representatives, and then the list of the, not people who are attending in person, and there's also two, we need to read the public hearing.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm sorry, it being a public meeting, we have to start on time. Is that correct, Bill?
Uh, what was it?
We have some action items we could-
Yeah, let's do the action items.
Yeah, I think we should wait.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea, because given the circumstances and what we're dealing with tonight.
Now, let's, let's do the 7:25. Okay. Yeah, so if being a-
Action items, we're going to do.
Yeah, but it being a public meeting, we're going to start on time, so we're going to do a few action items, couple. So Steph, if you want to jump ahead?
15, 15. Oh, okay. All right. Motion to approve the extended hours request for CBS Sporting Club LLC for April 24th, May 15th, and June 12th, 2021, until 2:00 a.m. for food service only. Approval may be rescinded for any and all dates requested if COVID restaurant operating regulations change. The Board of Health deems it unsafe to extend the hours, or CBS Sports Club LLC is found to be in violation of current COVID restaurant operating regulations.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's one more, too.
Yeah, do we have the, the minutes, too?
Yeah, that's before, sorry, that's 15.2.
Okay. Oh, there it is.
Do you need me to read it? Or you have it?
Motion to approve the Board of Selectmen February 16th, 2021 Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we're going to go, all right, we're going to go back to Shovel Town Brewery, Inc., public hearing. Steph, I'll have you read the public hearing notice, please.
Okay. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, March 30th, 2021, beginning at 7:00 p.m. in the Gollum Meeting Room. Meeting being held virtually. Instructions be provided when Board of Selectmen meeting agenda is posted. Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass., to discuss a formal grant of an alteration of premises to include Shovel Town Brewery, Inc., DBA A Taste of Foxborough pop-up, located at 25 Chestnut Street, Foxborough, Mass. The Board of Selectmen will outline all public and safety concerns, as well as provide all conditions and restrictions the applicant must follow. Also under review will be the application for a farmer's pouring license, malt only, a common vic, and seven-day entertainment license for Shovel Town Brewery, Inc., DBA A Taste of Foxborough, 25 Chestnut Street, Foxborough, Mass. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So this is a public meeting on a concept that sort of came to fruition a few weeks ago. We're going to have a presentation by Shovel Town Brewery on the concept.
Concept.
There is also rebuttal comments by the neighborhood, right behind, most specifically Shea Lane, I believe it is. But we also have, I think, the Lanning Board representative here. I, I think it's Paige here, too.
Paige is here as well, yeah, that's right.
So I think we'll start with a presentation. There's going to be a lot of feedback, there's going to be, we're in a Zoom situation, so bear with me. We're going to work with Christina to make sure that everybody gets heard. The butters also requested that I read a statement put together by them, but then sort of amended it a little bit, that all I needed really to do was highlight it, but any concerns they have, they're certainly going to speak about during the open meeting portion of this presentation. So if Shovel Town Board have any thoughts before we start? Okay. I think we'll start with the presentation by Shovel Town on what their thoughts are. Shovel Town co-owners Frank Altieri and James McSherry. You guys think, is that who we're seeing now?
Yep, Jim McSherry, co-owner of Shovel Town Brewery.
And who's going to be making the presentation?
Frank.
Okay. Frank, you here?
I see his name popped up. I don't know where he is in this virtual reality world.
I'm right here, sorry. I was muted, and now I'm unmuted. I apologize for that. I thought somebody else was muting me.
No, we might later, but not now.
First, I wanted to start by saying, Shovel Town Brewery would love to take this opportunity to thank the Select Board for giving us the opportunity to discuss what we believe in an exciting opportunity for the town of Foxborough and Shovel Town Brewery. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Frank Altieri, I'm the co-owner of Shovel Town Brewery, and my business partner, James McSherry, he and I own Shovel Town Brewery together. We also have some other members of our team are online, including Bill Buckley, who's been advising us from the Colony Group, and, the Bay Colony Group, sorry, and Sam Schofield, who is representing Doug King Builders tonight, who owns the property that we're talking about. In terms of our proposal, is, what we are proposing is establishing a Taste of Foxborough, a local food and craft beer pop-up market under temporary outdoor entertainment, food and craft beer location in a current vacant parcel located at 25 Chestnut Street in Foxborough. We would like to run this pop-up from late May through October of 2021, and the facility would feature 20-by-30 tent with tables underneath, as well as tables with umbrellas outside of the tent area, a game area, food and beverage structures, and portable restroom facilities. The site will be handicapped accessible, family-friendly, and feature food from either other local Foxborough restaurants or Shovel Town Brewery, and feature Shovel Town Brewery's beer. The facility will operate under all the conditions required by effective emergency orders and guidance associated with COVID-19 and its state of emergency that are in place at the time. So as those requirements change, we would like to, you know, stay abreast of those and ensure that we're operating under those conditions. We've executed a letter of intent with Doug King to establish the brewery/restaurant location on the site of the former fire station in the Keating Funeral Home on School Street in Foxborough Center when that building is ready for occupancy, and right now, we're estimating that's going to be in early 2022. However, this proposal would allow Shovel Town Brewery to introduce ourselves to the community while providing an outdoor venue for families to enjoy, which aligns with the current guidance and support of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and their initiative to promote and develop outdoor gatherings and entertainment during the pandemic, or as post-pandemic, um, activities. Shovel Town Brewery has successfully operated a top room and restaurant in Easton for four years without a single incident. We have also been instrumental in creating and running Prova, which was a similar concept in Brockton, in, in the base of a building that was yet to be built, and we ran that with the Prova team for two years, and that featured arts and crafts and craft beer, local food, family fun, and entertainment. And it was a huge success, really was. The only reason why we wouldn't be doing that again is because that, the space in which we were doing this temporary activity has now had a building built on that site, so we no longer could use that. We are looking at other opportunities in that area, but right now, we're focusing on the Foxborough location. As, as you may be aware, and, and I don't know if you saw it in the news this week, you know, these, these outdoor pop-up gardens have, have really been grown significantly in popularity across the United States. Several cities and towns leverage these types of things for cultural activities, for event space for their residents to enjoy. And recent trends, frankly, have seen these types of events moving into the suburbs, and it's really true, brings a sense of community to the areas in which it's been brought in. So, we've met, we, we came up with this concept, and actually, we, we started to work on it last year, and we got the town involved in that, with it last year, but it wasn't, we were late, and it wasn't really an opportunity to pursue it then. But, but we've revisited it, we've applied more resources to it, and we have met with the town departments, including fire, police, the Board of Health, Inspeccional Services, Planning and Economic Development, and the Town Manager's Office, to ensure, you know, the package that we've put together and the, the approach that we're going for is going to be mutually beneficial for everyone involved. Frankly, we're, we're looking forward to being engaged member of the community. We're very active in, in Easton, in our community. We do events with, you know, lots of the community organizations, lots of the nonprofits, and, and really worked well together with other businesses, profit and nonprofit, to be successful for all of us. And we're, we're looking to do the same thing in Foxborough and, and continue to contribute to the community as we grow. Any questions?
Any questions from the board yet?
I will, at some point, I mean, if he wants to, if he has any other stuff, I mean, I'd like to go over the site plan at some point.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I don't have anything displayed, but I did pass the site plan along either to Katie or Paige may be able to pull it up.
We, we have it in front of us.
No, I, I didn't know if you wanted to put it on the screen, so.
I don't know if we can.
I don't think that we can, right? Do you have that, Christina?
Not the best quality, though. Just because there's so much, you know, to share on the screen. Oh, looks all right.
Oh, there we go.
That looks better than-
Yeah, it looks better than what we had.
All right, Frank, so we have it up. You want to go ahead and talk about the site plan?
Um, I'd rather defer that to Bill and have him, because he designed it for us, and he knows all the technical details, so if you would, Bill Buckley, take it from here. knows all the technical details, so if you would, Bill Buckley, take it from here. Bill, you're muted.
We can't see Bill, but.
I can see Bill, but. Here he is.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Buckley, and I work for Bay Colony Group, and we put together this site sketch for Shovel Town for the project. And I'll just go over it very quickly. It's pretty basic. This piece of property is located opposite the intersection of Pace and Road, Chestnut Street, across from the old administration building for the state hospital. It backs up to the Chestnut Green retail facility over there on your left as you're looking at the drawing. And this piece of property is undeveloped. It is going to be developed at some point, of course. It is part of the state hospital project. It lies within the Chestnut Pace and Ovaly District, and this will be some type of commercial use some one day. And the reason I say that is because in the state hospital reuse plan, there was a restriction on the number of residential dwellings that could be built on the entire project, and that project has already maxed out. So this cannot ever be residential unless that plan was modified. So we know someday this is going to be a commercial use, a restaurant use. I know this is not a restaurant, but a restaurant use is allowed by special permit here. Everything is by special permit pretty much in the Chestnut Pace and Ovaly District. So what we're showing is, there's about 28 tables. We show them picnic-sized tables, and they're in the front of the site. We've pushed them as close to Chestnut Street as we possibly could for a number of reasons. First of all, we want the visibility from the street so people can see it, and we also, we're also sensitive to the fact that we back up to a residential neighborhood, Shea Lane, so we pushed the seating as close to the street as possible. Maybe two entrances to the site, one on the left as you're looking at the drawing. That is already there. That's a driveway that comes in to the back of the shops at Chestnut Green, and you can see the lighter gray. The lighter gray is what's existing. There's already a driveway there and a stub that goes into it. And it'll be a U-shaped driveway going through there, going around, and there'll be space for about 58 parking, there's about 58 spaces that we're showing on this lot. As I said, we have 28 tables, picnic tables, so there is no parking requirement on this. It's just, you know, what you think is reasonable. We kind of think that about, you know, one car per table is reasonable. We have almost double that amount of parking. So we're pretty confident that the amount of parking is acceptable, would be sufficient for the site. The site's also going to have water, municipal water, and municipal, or actually private sewer on it in order to serve the facility. In the middle here, where my hand is kind of showing, this is a tent, and this is a, these are food sheds that we're showing here. There will be, not permanent, but there'll be wooden structures or perhaps trailers. We're working on several concepts. Over here, this would be a, again, a portable toilet facility hooked into the sewer, so we'll have sewer and water on the site. That's a change that we actually, we've made after a meeting with the town's professional staff, because that was a serious concern from the Board of Health. So we're going to go with, you know, not a permanent connection, but definitely a hard connection for the water and sewer. The yellow is the area where we expect people to be. You can see the picnic tables. This back here, we're calling this a game area, and that would be an area where you could play a beanbag or whatever the kids call it nowadays, things like that, you know, while you're back there. That area will be fenced in. It will have a fence. What we're thinking is, is iron rods with chains on them to fence it off and control the access, which will actually be over in this area here and through here. We show a little fire truck up here. I don't know if anybody saw it last fall, but Doug King had redid a fire, bought an old fire truck and redid it, and he had it out there for a couple of weeks, and it will probably go back in there once the weather gets nicer. Just kind of sets the theme for the facility, which is across from the fire station, as we all know. Along the back, down in this area here, we're showing some landscaping, and what those are is they're six-foot-high arborvitae's placed six-foot on center. How did we come up with that number? That's the number that you have to do for zoning. So when this site is built someday, that is what the zoning is requires, the zoning regulations require for buffering. You can either do that, or if the planning board allows, you can have a fence. So we're putting up six-foot-high, six-foot-arborvitae's along that rear line, and they'll stay there because someday it will be a commercial use. So from the parking area here, the back of these spaces to the lot line is maybe 60 feet, and from the lot line to, you know, this area in here where the people will be, that's about 140 feet. Again, we're trying to be sensitive to the neighbors. That's why the cars will be blocking noise with quite a distance away. We're pushing it toward Chestnut Street. So we've tried to address, you know, buffering, we've tried to address noise, we've tried to address security, and some of the public health issues, especially when it comes to hard water and sewer connection. And I think I'll stop right there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask you a couple of questions on that?
Sure, absolutely, Chris.
Bill, the two entrances that you mentioned, are they both coming and going, or is it going to be a one-way loop?
I think we're going to do a one-way loop. We were talking to the planning board, I think Kevin Weinfeld was at one of the meetings, and so we thought it would be a one-way loop. It would come in from, we're thinking coming in from the left as you're looking at the plan and exiting onto Chestnut Street.
Okay. The fence that you're proposing on this long Chestnut Street, on the plan, it says chain fencing hanging on loops around facility, so is this going to be like a legitimate chain link fence or a temporary fence?
It's definitely not a, it's a fence to separate the area from Chestnut Street and from the parking area. It's not going to be a chain link fence or anything like that. It will be temporary, and it's not something that if you wanted to jump over it, you couldn't. It's more just to separate out the area where people are eating and drinking from any of the other areas.
Okay. The buffer area, right now, it looks like that whole lot is gravel, and then where you're going to plant the arborvitae's, there's a small little mound. So the question is, is that mound going to become bigger, or are you going to plant the arborvitae's right on that?
I think the arborvitae's will be further back. I mean, I haven't gone out and marked, we marked out the limit of clearing, and the limit of clearing, what we marked out was in here. So the arborvitae should be past that. That mound is not going to get any bigger, because that is what we've pushed up. At some point, someday when it gets developed, that will go away, but that's going to stay there, and the parking will be no further back than that.
Okay. So the buffer area between the arborvitae's and the row of parked cars, the first row that you see, what did you say that was, 60 feet or 160 feet?
60 feet, yes.
What is, is that going to be all gravel? Will that be grass? What will that be?
It'll be whatever's there now. It's just scrub. We're not going to do any landscaping or anything in there.
Okay. Will there be any kind of a fence or a curbing so cars don't, like, keep coming through? Like, how are you going to delineate the parking, especially on that side?
We were thinking of doing it like we do on the gravel at stadium events with barrels and striping on the ground.
Okay, all right.
The gravel parking lots up on Route 1, that's typically how we show them. They get, you paint them the ground so people know, and then you put some barrels out there to delineate.
So barrels will be blocking off that bigger wide-open buffer area?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're not going to line them up, but there'll be barrels there so that, you know, the person will know, hey, don't keep going, you're just pulling in straight and stopping.
Okay. Those are the only one questions really on the site plan that I had.
Well, I think we could sit here all night and, you know, look at the site plan and ask questions. I don't think that this board, at least me personally, is equipped to look at a site plan and no zoning and all that, so while I'm very much in support of this idea, and, you know, what a little center that, you know, I know uptown is uptown, this is kind of the downtown area is becoming, I think this could be a great addition, but I don't think that we should circumvent the public process that's in place for a reason. So, you know, I talked to Bill earlier, you know, and I even talked to some other folks and said, can you think of a time that a new establishment ever, you know, kind of the last stop is the Board of Selectmen, and this doesn't go through, you know, site plan review? And if the planning board wants to do an abbreviated site plan review, that's up to them, but I think in respect to the public process and respect to the neighbors, this needs to go through the proper process to make sure that it's vetted from a site plan perspective. You know, there's things to think of, like noise from the generators, where's overflow parking go? How do we make sure people don't park on Shea Lane and walk through? Headlights in someone's, you know, window of their home? I think it's just an important step, so while I think we can approve a license, I think, and I would request that this go through the proper process to the planning board before anything is approved. And, you know, if we're doing this under the guise of temporary dining orders, you know, while I respect the creativity of it, being someone who was in the group that helped develop those, I don't think that the intent of the temporary dining orders were ever to allow for a new establishment to go through without the proper process. So the intent from my perspective of the temporary dining orders, when it says a new outdoor dining area, is like the 99 Restaurant, who only has indoor dining, taking, you know, seating that's approved and has gone through site plan review inside and take that outside. So that's kind of my overarching comment before we get into too much tonight, is I hope that if we do approve this tonight, this isn't the end of the process, and we do maintain the integrity of the public process and the way that these establishments are meant to be designed and go through, you know, the planning, the planning step, whatever that may be. It doesn't have to be the full planning, but some sort of, you know, site plan review from people that are qualified and designated to do that.
So I believe we have a representative from the planning board, and I believe Paige is, can we pull them up, Christine?
Sure. Bill just needs to unshare his screen. Thank you.
Hi, I'm here. I just can't turn on my video for some reason. The host turned it off, so I'm off right now, which is fine by me. This is Paige. Oh, darn, now I have to start my video.
There we go.
There you go.
Picture here.
Okay, so if I could frame it, those are all really good comments by Leah and Valuable. I think, and Ron Bressi's here from the planning board, I think from the staff perspective, since, you know, I was in on the early conversations, I could just sort of frame it, sort of from my perspective, since I do a lot of the economic development in the community and I've been working on the fire station project and whatnot. First of all, this, like Frank mentioned, this was brought up last year, and in all honesty, we were all, at the staff level, pretty much a hard no. It just wasn't time, you know, COVID was too new last summer. We didn't really know what we were dealing with, and, you know, there was an appeal on the fire station project, so we weren't really sure. You know, we just didn't think it was the time. This year, with the appeal being resolved and the closing anticipated on the fire station with Doug King purchasing it with the intention of Shovel Town going in there, that's expected to occur in May, when they approached us, and also in light of the fact that so many of the seminars I've been attending all year long have been on outdoor spaces, create outdoor gathering locations, really promoting, there's been state grants for it on public locations, and this is a private one. So when this came along, while we admit it's a little outside the box, it didn't, you know, it sort of passed a little bit of the test for us. So that's where, also, the governor has issued an executive order that has allowed the suspension of certain provisions of zoning. If you notice, like Leah mentioned, the 99, people are dining on parking spaces. Those parking spaces are required under zoning, but because the governor is so intent on getting folks outdoors and promoting this outdoor dining, there's been some change of the rules that none of us has ever experienced before. So for those reasons, we did look at it, you know, from outside the box, but, and then with respect to the location, this is a mixed-use location. Chestnut Green is the reuse of Foxborough State Hospital, very successful. As you know, you have Conrad's right next door and, you know, restaurants all around. You have that area is mixed-use. In fact, Shea Lane is a part of this mixed-use project. That project was one, that street was once part of the state hospital. So for all those reasons, we sort of felt this was a good approach. Now, in light of the comments that Leah made, she always has good ones, we have, we will be holding a discussion on this at the April 8th planning board meeting. So at that time, like you say, we're more experienced at looking at site plans, and so the board will take a look at it then. So I think that's probably the best thing I have to say. Ron, do you have anything to add to this? You're on mute. Ron, you're on mute.
Okay, thank you. No, actually, I'm very much in agreement with what you have to say. I did actually reach out to Bill Buckley just now while he was doing his presentation on a couple of things that I think we would like to see him do, and I think this is a very positive move for the community.
Yeah, I agree. I think everyone thinks this is a great idea, and we welcome Shovel Town into town. We want to get this going. I just would ask you, would you want this to be next to your house with skipping that step of the process? I think we owe it to everyone to just make sure we follow the process and hear everyone out. And even, I think, you know, Paige and Ron, through the planning board process, would the butters get written notification, whereas that didn't happen in this, in this public hearing case, that question's come up a lot?
They would, I mean, if we, we could notify the butters, yes, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, like, little steps like that will go a long way in making this project successful and keeping everyone happy on both sides of the project.
I think I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, Paige and Bill, I thought at the time when there was a small committee of us together was, in keeping with the outside dining regulations set up by the governor, that we were sort of sitting in that classification versus the hard building a restaurant where a butters have to be notified, and the fact that the public meeting notice went out, sort of like our minds allowed us to let the community know that there was going to be a discussion on that. Tonight is a discussion night. There's absolutely no doubt about that. And looking back, you know, I think going through the planning board, you bring up a great point, Leah, absolutely no doubt about it. But this is, this was the fact-finding part. You know, they came to a few of us about a month ago, Paige, six weeks ago, and, you know, at that point, we all thought it was a great idea. We thought, you know, thinking out of the box a little bit, you know, in that area would be a perfect place to do it. I think their presentation, I don't even know, I had never even heard of the presentation a year ago, so obviously that didn't even come out of, you know, town hall at the time since it was nixed, so it was a new concept for me when I heard it. And not to go, not to forget, the second half of this discussion is we've got a lot of butters that are going to be speaking tonight.
And that's kind of my other point now, you know, keeping in mind for the butters, if there's going to be this second public hearing where there is site plan review, maybe just pointing that out to the butters that, you know, there will be this chance also there to kind of, you know, voice those concerns or, you know, do a deeper dive on the site plan.
So, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Leah, and Doc, and Paige, and Ron for interjecting here. This is, I think you stated it well by saying this is a fact-finding mission at this point, because this is an out-of-the-box type of approach. It's something new that we haven't taken on before, but there were a couple of things that sort of came together. One was the fact that it is allowed under the governor's direction to actually, for us to consider these types of things. And, but at the same time, we also were sensitized to the fact that it's a new concept for this particular neighborhood, and we want to be. concept for this particular neighborhood and we want to be, we want to be clear about the fact that we want to have their input. That being said, I mean, there is, I think Paige put it correctly, that this is not, this is a mixed-use area and one in which this type of use could be allowed. Granted, it would normally be by special permit if it was going to be permanent, but this is not going to be permanent, this is a, clearly a temporary use that will only be until the end of October. And the reason being is that the permanent location will be worked on by the builder and the contractor to build the new permanent site in the old fire station. So I couldn't think of a better way, in some ways, I mean, thinking creatively here, creativity, activity, trivially here, that we, I can't get that word out, I'm sorry, I'll just move on. That this was an opportunity to sort of welcome a new business into town, at the same time provide an opportunity for our residents to have another outdoor dining opportunity that we wouldn't otherwise have. And I think that's why this is actually worthy of consideration and this discussion tonight. So not to, again, not to, not to sort of surprise anybody or to make sure that anybody's not being heard, we, this is a discussion and I think that's why we have this, is to afford the opportunity for people to fully understand everything before they see it and before they comment on it. So I think that's the pro-purpose here and I think I appreciate everybody's comments here so far.
And when this, and when this came out as a public notice, Christina can attest to the fact that a number of phone calls came to the Selectmen's Office, they were all answered, more information went out to all the butters, the prospectus, the idea went all, went to them. They've, since, I'm going to read into the record some of their comments, they're also going to be online commenting also, zooming in to contact also. So, but, the other end of the spectrum, we've also gotten a few letters of encouragement that there's members of the community, granted they're not in the neighborhood, that are very much in favor of this potential project. Steph?
Yeah, well, and that's kind of where I was going to go. My, my initial feeling was, wow, this is great, this might be something that we can use. Then I started to think about the location, you know, it looks like they called me, Billy's done a wonderful job of scoping this out, you know, some of the things I thought of was, you know, and actually the original one that we got on board docs, that's why I reached out to Christina today, you could not see any of this, so I didn't even know and I kind of looked through and I don't think I found about the parking, I saw the capacity. So one of the concerns I have is, is the overflow of cars. If you can hold 180 people, I don't know if 58, and that's if you're successful and you're hitting your capacity, I don't think this parking is going to be sufficient enough. So my concern is, is the parking going to come over like in front of my Pearl and, you know, and I have no concerns about food and beverage, I mean, it's free market, competition is great, I have no concerns that way for the establishments over there. It would bother me if their customers could not park there because, you know, I'm just wondering, is there any way to control that, which I don't think there is? People are going to park, are they going to be cutting through the back, are they going to walk around? Will they hit the parking across the street? So while not a huge safety issue, and I know our public safety people have been, you know, involved in this, are they going to park across the street and then are we going to have people back and forth? You have that little, the roundabout there, right before you hit the police and fire station, and then all of a sudden, boom, you might have people coming, coming across. Things like, you know, I see the hours of operation, so I see 10 o'clock at night, which makes me think lights. So I haven't heard anybody talk about lighting, while you might have six feet here of varieties and trying to do the buffer, is there something that's going to buffer lighting? You know, and first of all, I mean, the whole planning board, I wish we had, I mean, we had, I did go back and watch the, the meeting with the Board of Health, I saw a lot of questions that weren't answered and it kind of seemed like some of the Board of Health were on board, some of them weren't, you know, maybe it was more discussion at that point for them too. Those are my concerns that, you know, I mean, I don't think we're ready to vote on this, this evening. I mean, I think we need to get, I mean, it's great if we're talking information, I see motions here to approve this. I most certainly wouldn't, wouldn't be ready to approve this without getting, you know, getting a little more information and, and then once we hear what the butters have to say, of course, that's, for me, that's what's most of concern, not, you know, I don't live anywhere near her, this isn't going to affect me at all. I think it's a great idea, great concept, it's great, and even seeing Shovel Town wanting to donate 1% of the sales to, to the town, to the-
Discretionary.
Discretionary fund, losing it here, is wonderful, it's a great way of welcoming yourself into the town. Yeah, I mean, I guess once the butters, you know, they say, those are just some of the things that red flag to me, not even living there, you know, is the parking, the lighting, and also maybe somebody, I know I read it in here, I think it might have been 62 or 64 decibels, for me, I don't even know what that means, like, I mean, actually what that is, how loud that is, if that's something that, you know, maybe someone can give us a little more explanation on how loud that actually is, you know, I think they're doing a good job of trying to buffer that stuff, I'm just wondering if it truly will buffer. And, you know, I saw things like, you know, music, comedy shows, dancing, you know, any place you are where there's alcohol being served, people's voices get a little louder, you know, and that's kind of stuff that you can't control till you're in the situation. And, yeah, so I mean, I'd like just to make sure that the butters are happy with what's being done. I know in a perfect world, everybody would be happy and I'm sure somewhere down the round, down the line, people are going to be really happy, some people may not be happy, but I just, yeah, if we can just like address that and I guess then hear what the butters, really their concerns are, that would be good for me.
I think I'm going to do it the other way around though, I'm going to talk with the, we're going to talk with the butters first, because I think there's a bunch of overlap with what you said and what their concerns are.
Perfect. And just to point out, I think almost what's a great question for this board versus if it does go to the next step, might be helpful in that discussion too.
What, I'm sorry Leah, what was that?
You know, some of those questions, we may want to clarify what's for this board and what's appropriate if it does go to planning for the next step, like, you know, I don't, I think Ron's better to answer questions about, you know, parking or, you know, buffer trees or, you know, that.
Decibels.
Well, decibels would be the town, building inspector.
So the board's position on this, and Stephanie, just to clarify, I mean, we put all, a whole range of motions in there for you tonight, not just a motion to approve because, including, you know, deferring or postponing this until further, further discussion because we didn't know how the board reacted.
Yeah.
But having said that, the board's primary goal is to focus on the licensing piece because this is, that's your realm of authority with respect to the alcohol license, things of that nature. So your alcohol attorney is on, is online tonight, Dave DeLuca, so in case there's any questions about that piece, he's actually to answer here to answer any questions as well. We want to make sure we have everybody here for, as a resource to the board tonight, because this is a new use, it's a new approach, we want to make sure he answers all the questions for you.
Can I ask one question about the license just before we move on to the, does, just because we don't see a lot of these licenses often, does this have the $5,000 fee that goes to economic development to or does this not?
This one, for the, for the new location, it will.
It will, okay.
But not for this one, because this is temporary.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, who's saying?
Katie.
This is Paige, hi.
Oh, hi Paige, sorry, I didn't know where the voice was coming from.
I understand, we're in this hybrid mode. I just wanted to build on what Leah said and maybe clarify, so when the public does speak. To be clear, it won't be a formal site plan review process, but what we're saying is we will hold a meeting on April 8th and we can notify a butters, so, but the folks here are hereby notified right now, that's the only item on our agenda, so it'll start right around 7:00 PM. And to Bill's point, they're focused tonight mostly on the liquor license discussion. At the planning board, we will be discussing then things like the layout of the site, the screening, the parking areas and that type of situation. So I, and then what I would expect is the planning board would make a recommendation back to the Board of Selectmen, because under the outdoor dining, this is actually permitted through Bill Keegan's office. So we, I would recommend that we follow that process where the planning board can, you know, listen to the butters, explain, discuss, you know, make some conditions that would then be recommended to the Board of Selectmen to include in their permits.
And, you know, do we even need to relook at the temporary dining orders, Paige? Because, you know, I think me, you, Ron and some other people worked on them and we really never talked about this, so yes, this is allowed through the governors, but we own temporary dining orders and we, I know we're being creative and saying this fits in it, but we've never had this-
Yeah, this doesn't fit in the, in the intent that we-
And we own that regulation, not, you know, the governor or not anyone else, these are our orders. And while we're kind of, you know, making it fit in here, me personally, and it sounds like Chris, this was never our intent under the orders, was to allow new establishments.
Right, and I agree 100% and I'm not opposed to this establishment happening, but I don't think it's, it's what the intent of the temporary dining orders we put in place are.
It's a unique situation.
It is.
An intent.
Yeah, I mean, and that's why, you know, we're certainly having this discussion is the uniqueness, it certainly falls in between.
We didn't know what to do with it because, you know, quite honestly, you know, we're not in a position to say yes or no to it. I certainly am not going to sign off on something like this until I had weigh-in from, from the board and then now the board has asked for further assistance from the planning board. We've gotten a weigh-in from the Board of Health, so we want to make sure we're doing the right thing here, but, but by the same token, it is creative, it's not, it doesn't fit neatly into the regulations as, as considered. But if you read the order, it does, it does allow for it. So that's the thing, so, and I don't think anybody ever contemplated something like this happening.
Right, again, it may allow for it, but we own the temporary dining orders are this board's policy.
Exactly, exactly. So the question is, is that something you feel you could, you could work with?
Where does it, I don't think it conflicts, if you actually read the temporary outdoor dining, I haven't been able to find anything that precludes this. I know what you're saying that you-
No, right, you could, you could do that Paige, but through every conversation you, I, Ron and this board have had, when it says new, new, new temporary outdoor dining, it was never under the guise of a new establishment, it was always again, like the 99 who doesn't have outdoor dining, that to me was new, that they didn't have outdoor dining and we were allowing it through the temporary. So yes, Paige, I completely agree with you, I went back and looked at them, could you, could you say that this fits under it? Sure. But I don't believe that our intent in issuing these was ever for new establishments.
Yep.
Well, and again, I don't, we're not proposing that this would be done, this is such a unique circumstance where we have the combination of a landowner in a mixed-use project who happens to own an uptown, or about to own an uptown piece of property where a restaurant is about to move in, so this, it's really the perfect storm, like to go through all this change, there's nobody else that it would apply to. We're not trying to sort of hand this over, this sort of is a unique circumstance that came to us. So we're not trying to promote this as anywhere else or anything else, this is a one-time experience that we just felt, that could fall into place.
Right, so what you're saying is the temporary dining orders were never written for this and now here we are, so let's just look at it and, you know, what we're saying.
Well, I think we're straddling everything.
I've also worked for firms where, yeah, I mean, actually if you read the temporary outdoor dining permit, they don't, or language that doesn't preclude it. It wasn't done that way on purpose, but it doesn't preclude it. And again, we are in a pandemic that none of us foresaw, whereas I've never imagined the governor suspending zoning provisions, like, you know, to allow dining in the parking lot. So again, we're in a very unique circumstance. So I understand, you know, conventionally, we all want to do this just every so way, but we're in a unique circumstance and this is a unique time situation.
And we're straddling both, we're straddling the, the new temporary guidelines and at the same time, you know, our, you know, going to planning board, making sure that all of-
I think, I think that, I'm not disagreeing with anyone, with Paige, with you, with anyone, I'm just saying we owe, we can't skip a very important step of the process in respect to, to, you know, our, our process and everyone that this impacts, whether it's positive or negative.
Well, to take off on that, normally we have site plan review for a, for a position, for a place like a local, a center location or 99 for that, that we wouldn't go through that process.
But they already have gone through site plan review in the past.
For a new building, correct.
Yes, right, yeah.
Right, so, but, but for this one, none of us are objecting to that.
Right, none of us are objecting to it.
Because we say, because it is unique, it's a new location and they're going to be building, they're going to be starting construction this year for the new building, so this is-
We're going to go through planning, we're going to go through building inspector, we're going to go through health, we're going to go through-
It already went through health and actually if you watched the Board of Health meeting, which you may have watched it more recently than, than I, a lot of their questions were about site plan and zoning and all that, and the response was, was, oh, don't worry, it's going to go through that, focus on health, you know, so kind of coming now, like their same, the Board of Health, although they approved it, they had some questions that are similar to like our questions.
Yeah, there's a long list they-
Yeah, yeah.
And at their meeting, they had, had no site plan, they had no schematics, so, and that was mentioned a lot. For them, you know, I know maybe this isn't all what they're, they're supposed to be approving, but, you know, they had lots of questions too, so I'm not going to speak for the Board of Health, they're their own entity, but, I mean, I will say, I mean, it's a great concept, absolutely, but I will have to piggyback on what Leah said, when we sat here, it was to give relief to existing businesses who are losing out because they've lost their indoor space. So, you know, yeah, I think if this can, we can squeeze this in and it, you know, all the boxes are checked off, you know, then that's great, but it, you know, it, it needs to, we need to hear exactly what planning says and, you know, yeah.
We will.
Doc, suggestion, just a suggestion, where the liquor license is really the biggest piece under our purview, should we, while Dave's on here now, just kind of ask any questions or hear what, because it's a special, it's a different type of license, right?
That's right.
It's that-
The farmer's brew license.
And that's the same as that Warrentown has?
Farmer's pour, farmer's pour.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea, let's talk about that so we don't have to keep him on the line too much longer. Yeah.
So Dave, would you, would you mind just giving the board a briefing on, on the farmer's pouring license and how that would work in this instance?
Sure, thank you. Good to see you all, I appreciate the opportunity to be here to speak with you. I have been briefed, I've got some expert help from the manager's office on the details of this proposal, and I can tell you, while it's a relatively unique situation, though it's very common in, in the city, maybe less common in suburban areas, it is perfectly permissible under the farmer brewer's license, which as you know is a, is a state license for a local licensing authority to issue a pouring permit, which I think is what is being sought in this case, that is an above quota license for a location that, again in this case, is an outdoor facility. And in that instance, it is perfectly permissible for your board to review the merits of the proposal and to determine whether or not it complies with Chapter 138, Section 23, in sofar as being in the public, in favor of public good and public convenience. That's really the only criteria that you have for purposes of issuing a pouring permit. If you decide that it is in the public good and in the public convenience, then you have every right to condition that permit in every manner that has been discussed so far. In order to assist you in, in doing that, should you choose to permit the, the use, you certainly could request a review by other ancillary boards, the planning board, the Board of Health, to provide to the licensing authority any details that they feel are appropriate in terms of meeting, again, your objective of public good and public convenience. I think what I've heard so far is the intention to have it proceed through a site plan review process to provide you some of those details, and again, judging the merits of the request, your board is perfectly authorized to, to issue the pouring permit with conditions or if you determine that it is not in the public good or is somehow contrary to public convenience, to deny the, the request. to deny the request. But I've requested certain details I think you're presented with here, which is that there's been confirmation of the authority to use the property and there's been some confirmation so far from a zoning perspective that it meets the mixed-use zoning requirement. So from that standpoint, your board is perfectly capable now of considering the merits of the proposal from a alcohol licensing standpoint. I understand there are overlaying conditions or requirements currently existing from the state, and I would leave it to the applicant to be sure, to confirm that all of those requirements are being met. But I think from an alcohol licensing standpoint, they have met the threshold and it is now, you know, your board's prerogative to determine the merits of the proposal and whether or not it meets the basic requirements of public good and public convenience in order for it to be licensed for the town of Foxborough.
Mr. President Chairman, so Dave, to you on this one, would it be appropriate for the board to continue this hearing following, in observance of the meeting before the planning board and to receive their recommendation before the board considers the actual license decision?
Yeah, I do think that that's a good thought and I think a reasonable strategy. While we know that it does conform to the use requirements, it still would be helpful to receive maybe some specific recommendations from those boards that are more generally accustomed to reviewing proposals such as this and to provide that guidance to the local licensing authority in a case like this where it's likely to require some specific conditioning if, in fact, it were to be permitted.
Okay. Any questions?
Just, if I may, you know, one suggestion while we have this time too, is maybe we look at our temporary dining orders, and Mr. DeLuca, I don't know if you think that that's something that we need to just, you know, clarify and put in writing if we have the time to, you know, clarify this particular situation. I know no one anticipated for it, but now here we are, we have some time, you know, thoughts on that piece of it, just to align with the situation that we're in now?
Sure, you have every opportunity to review those regulations, they're going to be relevant certainly in a very short period of time, I hope, as outdoor dining begins again. If you've had some reason to make those modifications, now's a good time to review those. This, I understand, is a very unique situation, it's an outdoor venue, and with that come, you know, all of the burdens that go along with those outdoor venue, and you want to be sure that your regulations are speaking to all of those concerns going forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Sure.
So, on the other side of the coin is a letter to the board from members of the abutters. It's a pretty long, lengthy rebuttal, concerns. I was told at one point to read it into the record, but then got approval to read just the highlights, knowing that we're going to go over most of this anyway. It will be on record up at the office as a public record. To go through a few of the highlights, "We do not believe the proposed use is allowed in the Chestnut-Pason Overlay District. The Foxborough zoning code in the Chestnut-Pason Overlay District guidelines are inconclusive at best and are silent to the proposed use as they reference only permanent buildings and sites, not open-air uses." Number two, "We are aware that the town board's departments, employees have met with the proponents on numerous occasions and have specifically excluded the abutters and others affected by this project." Number two I totally disagree with, but it was something I wanted to bring to everybody's Just by the nature and design of pop-up beer garden, they are typically located in urban areas or large outdoor venues such as concerts, fairs, et cetera. Trucks, trailers, and sheds typically used in this type of event are mechanically unsophisticated, loud, noisy, and have poor smoke and odor control. The resulting noise, odor, and congestion will have a negative impact on the residents of Shea Lane as detailed below. Parking, since there is not adequate onsite parking, cars will be looking for places to park. Steph brought that up pretty concisely a little bit earlier. Traffic with approximately 90 cars serving just the 180 occupants on the site, not to mention any worker parking and deliveries, there will be a constant turnover of spaces as well. Noise, odors, trash, rodents, the site is proposed to house 180 occupants, 90 cars, music, toilet facility, an outdoor pizza oven, a food trailer and a beer trailer, and four tents for other uses. We believe that if the town, we believe that if the town believes that this pop-up beer garden is an asset to the town, there should be more appropriate location for it and that it would not have a major impact on existing quiet residential neighborhood and existing. This proposed use would have a major impact on the existing residential neighborhood, create major traffic and parking problems, and affect emergency vehicle response. We strongly urge the town officials to deny this project." So that highlights a few of their concerns. I think we'll start with probably Gary. Gary's one of the abutters. He's one, the top signature, although it was signed by, I think, most of the residents of Shea Lane.
Yes, may I speak?
Is that Gary? I'm not sure.
Yes.
Okay, Gary, yeah, why don't you introduce yourself and give us your address?
Yes, I'm at the 10B Shea Lane, and I've been in the neighborhood for 10 years now. And I really just wanted to say that we, this is the first we've heard about this, the people in the neighborhood. Chairman went over all the issues, there are a lot of complex issues, and we just felt left out. You know, we really felt left out of the process, and that's what we're asking for.
Okay, Gary, thank you. This, I have to admit, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the process. The fact that, you know, it's an open public meeting, you and your resident, your neighbors certainly have time now to voice their concerns. Is there anybody else in the neighborhood that would like to speak?
Do you want to just go down the list that I gave you?
Oh, yeah, sure. So, John Green, I could cut the name on Greenhalgh.
Greenlaw, I think it is?
Greenhalgh, Greenhalgh.
Yes, John Green, he's coming on.
Greenhalgh is the name. Can you hear me?
Now we can, yeah. How do you pronounce your last name, John?
Greenhouse.
So, yeah, you've got.
So, I live at, yeah, I live at 14A. Like Gary said, I mean, you know, we didn't hear anything about this until around a week ago, and we only came across it by chance, so it's very odd that you would move in this kind of way and not try and involve the residents, especially with something like this. So quite disappointing. Like Gary said, I mean, a lot of us have lived here for around 10 years, so it's not like we're new residents. So we would expect a little bit more from the towns, to be honest with you. Now, the biggest issue is, you know, the zoning, I don't think actually allows this. Now, you might try and twist the COVID outdoor extension, but it is a twisting of the rule. It clearly states that the approval, it allows an expansion of an outdoor, you know, table service from an existing restaurant, not something new, something different. This is a completely different use that's been proposed from a business that currently isn't in town, so I don't know how it's even being considered. I'd just like to pose that question first.
I don't know, Paige, you're still on? Sorry, there you go, Paige. Paige, did you hear what he had to say?
I did. Yeah, well, obviously, we are looking at this a little differently, and we felt that it did fit the parameters, as, again, as I've said, I've attended so many outdoor dining, outdoor gathering things, so we were trying to work with a restaurant that's coming to town to seek a location for the community to gather in a mixed-use district, so, yeah.
The ruling does state an expansion. It doesn't say you can just create a new place, a new pop-up tent to start.
It says creation.
This is an expansion.
It says, or creation or expansion of outdoor dining.
Yeah, well, the one I've read doesn't say creation, it says, "Request for expansion of outdoor table service or extensions may be granted approvals," so I don't know which one you're looking at.
I'm looking at the front page of the guidelines, I could read the whole thing to you, but basically it says allowing the creation or expansion of outdoor dining areas to facilitate social distancing. It's in the intent section.
Okay. I mean, then we move on to the safety issues, I mean, you know, we've just seen that site plan, that junction right next to Conrad's where you're talking about entering that site is a very, very dangerous junction. The traffic moves through there extremely fast. There are already issues with how fast that traffic moves around town. This area, you know, there are kids that play here, there are kids that go over to Pason Road, there are kids that use the playing fields there, the parks there, and we're talking about putting a brewery bar right next to it where people come specifically to drink beer. Are you guys, are you guys really thinking this through? I mean, I actually go to a lot of brewery bars, and I'll tell you where they all are, they're all on the outskirts of town, they're all in reused industrial units where they can have these places safely, people can go there in big numbers, which they do, and they all drink beer and they have a great time. And they drive away on quiet roads, they don't drive through the middle of town. So I think you should really put some thought and consideration into that. This will be very popular, the beer they serve is great, there are going to be lots of people coming here, but think about where you're putting this, I don't think the town has really considered, or even put any analysis into how busy it potentially could be. Can anybody speak to that, or give me an answer?
I don't think at this stage we can answer that question yet.
I think it's fair to say, though, that, you know, I'm going to have to disagree with you in some respects, sir, because you're right next to a restaurant, and it's also a bar.
And has outside dining.
And has outside dining. So I don't know that I can say to you that this is really outside the normal use of that particular area in that regard. It's also, it was pointed out in the earlier presentation from the engineer that this area is not, this particular pad is not slated for residential use. So it's, so I think, in due respect to your comments, that it is an appropriate use in that regard. I think it's really important also to point out, this is a temporary use, it's not, and therefore, if you look at the state guidelines as the governor had issued them, this was always designed to be a temporary use, not a permanent use, which then was also, by the way, waives the Chapter 40B requirements under zoning. So I think, with due respect to the comments that under normal zoning conditions, the only one difference in this case, this actually, this use is actually allowed, it would be by special permit, but then, but in this, but if you read the new regulations, the regulations don't require a special permit under these conditions. That's why it's waived, and that's why it's, it is possible for us to have the conversation. And I think it's also important to point out that two people have already just said that, you know, this is the first we've heard of it. Well, that's because normally what happens is that someone will approach the town and find out if it's even possible to do this, and then it gets vetted internally before it then gets presented to the public, so that we can, ourselves are in a position to answer questions to the public in an informed way, as opposed to just not seeing it for the first time and then letting everybody sort of receive it at the same time. So this is sort of an opportunity for us to take the input from the public, not to have the board just act on it, but to certainly have the input from folks who live in and around the area, and make sure we answer the questions that you have, and also make sure you have the right information. So, because I think a lot of times misinformation gets put out there, and I think that's what we want to do, is try and correct that.
Yeah, I mean, let's not kid ourselves, this project has been planned for a lot longer than it's been made apparent, and there's been a lot of meetings that have gone on, so let's not talk about this just happening recently. I think there's been, there's been a lot more meetings. And just coming back to your comment on Conrad's, it's quite interesting, you mentioned that. I remember when Waxes was at its peak, and it had to be closed down because there were so many people going there, drinking too much and causing, they were getting pulled over with DUIs around town. Since Conrad's has moved in, it has been much, much better, but now we're talking about putting another specific drinking place right next to it, that should be a clear consideration.
You know, I really have to disagree with you that, you know, this has been in the planning stages a lot longer than the month or five weeks that we've been discussing it. I've been chairman of this board for two years, first time I heard about it was five weeks ago. So, you know, it.
Five weeks. A moment ago it was two weeks, now it's five weeks. So that's already five, so you just said it's five weeks.
Well, let me interject, besides him as chairman, us board members found out, we got the information on Friday.
I saw it on the Board of Health meeting, actually.
Unless we had watched the Board of Health, we found out about this on Friday, so you knew about it before I did.
Well, and you know what I would say, I know, if I'm misspeaking, please forgive me, I think it might have been Paige that might have said, because of this, we didn't have to notify the abutters. You know, this is a special circumstance. I think we owed the abutters to be notified, not to read it in a public notice or to find out last minute that it's going to be in front of us. That's just my opinion, that it would have, it would have been the right thing to do, because there's a lot of different spins to this project, and it would have been respectful for them to, whether they have to be or not.
We are going to do that, Stephanie, we are going to do that. So the point is, is that there's still a first opportunity for people to hear what's being proposed. I mean, the board could just say tonight, we're opposed to this whole thing and just say, let's not go any further, all right? But the other side of that is, this is an opportunity to you to weigh in, find out what the concerns are, and then afford the opportunity for others to have weigh in as well, and that's why you do this. It's a process, it's a public process.
And I agree, and not that we had to take action on any of these, but as a board member, when I look down and see motions to approve.
But that's the.
Just Christine doing her.
That's standard operating, that's a standard approach.
Okay.
I got to say, though, I saw the same thing, I saw motions to approve, and I actually reached out to you, Bill, and I said, are we, this is going to planning, right? And you said, yeah, I think so, and then we, then I found out we were the last.
But as far as the motions, it says motion to, but you read underneath, it says also motion to, motion to delay or postpone.
Yeah.
So there's an array of motions to give you in the event of the board, if the board felt compelled to move tonight, you could do that.
Oh, oh, and I understand that, but I'm just saying, and I understand why they're here, but as a board member, when I saw that there was an opportunity for us just to approve this tonight, I thought to myself, okay, so this is the final, or could have been the final, could have been the final. I misspoke. So I just think, listen, yeah, it is a special circumstance, and, you know, and then I'm reading this, and I'm also reading from the Board of Health that the applicant has not even done a number of things, so why we would even be, you know, there's a list of things here that haven't been completed, which I'm sure will be completed, but the fact that we're even see that a motion might have been made, maybe it was just the way Christine put it, just in case we were going to.
That's right.
But as a board member, I'm looking down and I'm like, oh, this might be just decided tonight.
You have every right to decide when you want to approve this or not approve it, or delay it, or ask for additional input from another board, which you've done.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think all of those steps are appropriate, there has to be a starting point.
Right, you know.
There has to be a starting point, and so this is why this is.
It's a unique situation that no matter what the neighbors say, only came out five weeks ago. It was a discussion we had that we decided, let's bring it to the board, but it doesn't fit a mold. This is new to all of us. This is what we're here for, is to. This is what we're here for, is to discuss it. The fact that Christina is super efficient and put a number of, I'm sorry you read that wrong, but it, 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 it was just to make sure that you had.
Every option.
You know, the proper wording that needed to be done.
Yeah.
Aside from that, no decision has to be made today. And as a matter of fact, going forward, there's a lot of more information we need. And I think this discussion has been phenomenal in the fact that we've drawn in a lot of people to give us input. And that's what we needed. That's what we, that's what this was all about. Um, it, it, could we potentially have, um, you know, uh, you know, notified the abutters? Yeah, in retrospect, probably. Um, but again, no decisions being made today. So, and, and the abutters, no. And it was through a public notice, but that's what the public notice is for. It also is to.
And, and, and in due respect, I mean, you, you don't, you don't normally notify butters when you approve a license. Right? So, so.
But they would at the site plan process.
Right, exactly. So which, which is the reason why.
I think we all hear what everyone's saying.
Yeah, exactly. So, so when you go to that point where you say, okay, well, then let's go to the, to the, to the planning board process where they do site plan approval, that would be the point where they would, would look at that. And even this doesn't, is, is only a interim step, I mean, or, or a modified step for site approval, because even that is something that, and they've indicated that they want to notify the neighbors to do that, which I think is appropriate. I don't have any issue with that. Because I do think that the more we get input from folks about it, the better it is. And I think there'll be things in there that people, us, that anyone sitting up here has not seen, and not even thought about. And I think that's why it's important to do that.
Um, going down the list, and, um, people that might want to be heard, Kurt?
Can I just, can I just finish what I was saying? I just have one or two last things I'll wrap up. I'll be real quick. So, the last thing is, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there. We're seeing different amounts of people on, in different documents. One's saying it's 180 people, another one said it's less, but it seemed like 180. The scale of this seems very large for something that's supposed to be a small pop-up. Originally, it was supposed to be open until 8:00 p.m. The latest document says it's going to be open until 10:00 p.m. at night. Originally, it was going to be only open for 12 weeks. Now they're saying it's going to be open until December. Why, why would we want this a pop-up opening December with winter storm weather and Patriots traffic running, running right past it? There's some big unanswered questions. No one's thought this through thoroughly. So you're right, this is the start of the process. I'm sure this place would be great, but the location seems off, and no one's thought this through. So, that's it. I'll wrap up from there. You can talk to everybody else.
Uh, Kurt Falf?
Yes?
Kurt, you're on the list to be heard.
Okay, I'm here. Uh, I'm a Shea Lane resident, and I was one of the signers of the petition that was sent to you. Uh, I am heartened by the discussion so far, and the fact that you recognize that we really have not had a chance to provide input on a project which is obviously going to impact our neighborhood, uh, and the fact that we can have a planning board meeting on the 8th and be able to attend that, and to go into a lot of the issues that we have raised in our letter to you in detail. I think it's a very good thing. Stephanie brought up a, a lot of the issues that we have. Certainly, parking is a big issue. We feel that there isn't sufficient parking, and the, uh, it could impact us in the sense that people will find spaces on Shea Lane and then cut across private property to get to the, to the venue. Uh, certainly a big thing is noise. Uh, it stated that the noise level, we kept at 52 decibels. That is about speaking level for a small group of people. You get 180 people drinking beer, clinking glasses, with two refrigerator trucks for the beer and the food, and I guarantee you, it's going to be a lot louder than 82, than 62 decibels. And it'll be at a time during the summer when people will have their windows open. That'll be very distracting, and I am very concerned about that. In addition, uh, the buffer line that's shown with the, uh, aggravities, we don't think is going to be sufficient. I think you'd need at least a solid barrier there, reduce noise, light, dust, uh, with some of the windstorms we've had recently. We have a lot of litter in our yard. I pick up a lot of Walgreen receipts out of my bushes. I can only imagine what I'll be picking up now with napkins and what else blowing in the wind onto our street and into our shrubs and trees. Um, vice will be an issue, odor, perhaps vermin, rodents, don't know. But, uh, I, I welcome the chance to attend a planning board meeting on the 8th, uh, and have a chance to go into these issues and a lot more to deal. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, Gary Waldrop?
I had spoken earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gary. Yep. I apologize. Uh, Richard DeCoste? Is Richard still on?
He, he is.
He? His name is reflected up here.
Okay. Um, uh, Bob Conrad, is Bob still, uh, on the line? Bob, uh, the owner of Conrad's?
The owner of Conrad's?
Yeah, Bob, how you doing?
Good, thank you. Uh, I'll be, I'll be quick. I just, just want to chime in. Um, you know, first, I have no issue with fair market competition. I think it's great. I think that sometimes the more restaurants you have downtown and other places, it brings more people in. Um, I just had a couple of comments. Somebody's repeated repetitive, but, um, you know, as, as we know, the, the restaurant business has been one of the hottest head industries, uh, in the country. And, and just in Massachusetts, 3,400, 3,400 restaurants have closed, uh, since COVID. That's 23% of all the state's restaurants. Uh, I opened up, I opened up about three weeks before COVID, and fortunately, um, because of the, the community in Foxwoods, I mean, Fox, Foxborough and other towns, uh, it's, it's supported us and we're able to stay open. And, and a lot of that happened because of the, the patio we were able to have. Um, and, and that, that kind of got us through the, that season, and we're starting to see a little bit of a light at the end of this COVID tunnel. Uh, but to me, the, the, the bigger issue for me is, you know, one is the parking. We have very limited parking as it is. When we first opened, you know, there wasn't many spots just for our plaza, and I can't imagine that we'll have a lot of people trying to maybe come over at our store or, or there and back and forth and, and park at our place and maybe eat, have a drink, and then walk over and spend a couple hours over there. Um, there's, there's probably no controlling that. But I think, I, one of my biggest things, I feel Governor Baker's, uh, this order for outdoor, outdoor dining, when they say creation and expansion, you know, that, that's, that's, to me is, if I had a patio like I do in Foxborough, I was able to expand a little bit on that patio and put some tables on, on outside our patio. Uh, in, in Walpole, I have no patio. So that's where the creation came in. They let us, you know, a lot of these towns have, have been great, and they put Jersey barriers up to block off parking spots and create an outdoor dining area because there wasn't any outdoor dining at that restaurant. I don't think, um, it's meant for a restaurant that's not open and is, is going to be, uh, it's, to me, it's, it's adjacent to your restaurant, right? It's part of your parking lot. It's your sidewalk. It's not a, a place a couple miles away and for a place that's not even open yet. Uh, so that's basically how I feel. I think, um, you know, I think it's a great idea. I think if it was somewhere else and, and it's a pop-up and it's not part of this outdoor dining, it's just something that the board did and, and had it go somewhere where it's not, and it's in a different area that, that's more suitable for that type of area, it would be better for all. Um, I just, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of that, this happening that way. I think, um, uh, it, it could have been, um, I said that creation and expansion to me is a little bit different, uh, term. I'm, I'm interpreting a little bit different than I think it was, uh, Paige could say. Uh, and I did have one question, if I could, is, is somebody told me, and I'm not even sure if it's true enough, but I want to ask, is this a, a one-year-only thing, even if, uh, when Shovel Town opens up? You know, I, 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 I serve a lot of their products, I think, at, at our restaurants. But, uh, is this a one-year thing, and once they're opened up, and it won't be coming back there, or another type of thing opening there? Or, or is this a possibility that it could be, happen every year? That was my, uh, one question after my comment.
This is, this is a one-year opportunity to do it, and it's going to expire at the end of October. And, um, and the reason is, is because of the, uh, current regulations that are allowed by the state that gives that opportunity to do that. That's all.
Has anyone asked the state? I'm just curious if the intent, about the intent with, like, creation as of new, kind of like what Bob's saying, have we asked that question?
We've not asked the state, no.
I mean, it.
No. Well, because I, I think, I think the, and, and the reason is, is because if, virtually everybody we've talked to has, has said that that seems to be possible.
Local authority, yeah.
Yeah, it seems to be. It's within the board's discretion to do that.
Did you hear the answer to that, Bob?
I did, I did. You know, I, I, I'm, like I said, I, I've been to a lot of these, these, um, meetings for downtown development and other areas and towns. And, and it was, to me, it was always brought up that it's, it's, wasn't so much creation, that was today, but she read that right off, that it's, it's an opportunity for people that didn't have any chance of having outdoor dining, or to try and get more people outside so you could, you know, keep your doors open. You'd be able to open once this is, uh, we get past this COVID thing. It was, it was more that to me than it was, um, creating a whole different area, uh, outside, not adjacent, not even attached to your property, and for someone that's not even open yet.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Nick Lombardi?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, good evening. Um, yeah, just to, uh, not, not repeat what everyone else has said, um, just a couple of points that I wanted to make that probably are repetitive. But as Kurt said, um, the idea of the parking on Shea Lane is, is a concern for us. Um, even, even during Patriot games, we have people parking on, on our cul-de-sac and on our street and walking over to Patriots, uh, to Gillette Stadium. Um, the idea, the, also the garbage that, that Kurt had mentioned, um, I'm, I'm at 14B Shea Lane, and, and I can tell you, if you want to take a trip over, it's a daily garbage pickup at my, uh, at my residence. Um, John brought up a great point. There are a lot of kids in the neighborhood. Um, I, I know that they use the parks across the street. Um, other than that, like everyone else said, you know, we, we do appreciate that the board, um, you know, is, is including us now in the, in the process. Um, and so, you know, I look forward to that April 8th meeting also. Um, I think, again, it's, it's a great concept. I like my, my neighbor, John, like, like to visit, uh, these breweries. I just think that there, there might be a better spot in town, um, for this. And I hope, um, you know, as, as I close, that the board would at least consider it. Um, the people from Shovel Town, if they're still on the, on, on the line, may consider it. Um, and I know, you know, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's along in the process. I, I have no illusions that it's not, it's probably going to be there. So I have no illusions that, you know, anything we, we say or do. But, um, you know, I just hope that the board, you know, takes it into consideration, uh, and, and happy to see it tonight, you know, at least, uh, you know, taking us into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. And I think, uh, one more, um, Dennis Keefe?
Uh, he, he just want, he said he would, um, message to pay a comment, but I think that Ron from the planning board had a comment to make.
Okay, uh, Ron?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Um, one thing, Leah, you and I and Paige were the ones who worked on putting most of these regulations together initially for the outdoor dining. I'd be more than happy to sit down with you over the next week and, you know, vet through them and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, no one, no one expected this, but now here it is. So, you know, my first thoughts are, like, maybe the approval process for this, maybe we call this, I don't know how many tiers we're up to, tier four. You know, it's not the town manager, it's the planning board and the board of selectmen. So I've got some ideas already, and I think the group worked well together to get this done quickly. And, you know, even on the flip side, for Shovel Town, right now, this expires if, if the governor lifts the orders. So imagine we're in August, COVID's going good, and the governor lifts the orders. What does that mean to Shovel Town that's got this pop-up going on? That's another piece we need to think about. You know, maybe, maybe it's, you know, until the governor extends the orders, or we rescind it, you know. So some, some thoughts already, Ron, for us to talk about.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Uh, the other thing I would like to touch on is, um, what Bob Conrad brought up. When we were looking at the initial regs, we were trying to create outdoor dining off-site for some of the restaurants that we have in the, um, the uptown proper. And we were looking at things such as the common and so forth. So it, it's not completely unusual that we would look at something off-site. This is a unique situation, though, and I'll be the first to admit it. And as a board, we are going to vet this.
Thank you.
But I mean, I think for a temperature check, at least speaking for myself, I think I'm in favor of this type of concept, as long as it goes through the right process and the neighbors are heard, and, you know, we make all the reasonable accommodations to keep and make everyone happy. Doesn't mean everything will work out, but we'll hear people out. We'll work together, and we'll try to see, you know, where we land.
So let's, um, I mean, we've, we've heard a lot of discussion on it, heard, heard everybody on it. Let's, um, maybe, uh.
We do have the two letters to support that those citizens requested to be read into the record.
Oh, they wanted to be read into the record.
The short ones, yes. You know, from Phil and, uh.
Katie?
Katie, yes.
All right. Uh, they asked that, uh, two, two supporters asked that I read this into the record. Uh, dear Board of Selectmen, as a resident in Homer and or Foxborough, I'm writing to you in my support of the proposed food truck pop-up market at the vacant parcel located at 25 Chestnut Street. I know too often that the voices that are often the most vocal are those who are resistant to change and progress. From my discussions with friends and neighbors, many are in support of this idea and would welcome the opportunity for new business and eateries to join our wonderful community. Right now, there are limited options for dining, and many people frequent neighboring towns when we go out due to the limited options available in Foxborough. I love the idea of the pop-up as a way to introduce Shovel Town to our community prior to their official launch in 2022. Pop-up markets are successful in many parts of the country and provide the residents and visitors with a fun communal gathering place while supporting local entrepreneurs. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Katie Wells. Wells. Uh, another, um, dear Board of Selectmen, as a resident in Foxborough, I wish to express my support of the food truck initiative and any initiative that will bring more mom-and-pop food operations to our town. Currently, our options are very limited for anyone other than a chain restaurant, pizza, or Asian options. I would much rather spend my money here in Foxborough rather than go to other neighboring towns for dinner when I would like variety, which is what I and many of my neighbors do currently. From Facebook post on Foxborough Discussion from Deb Stewart, it sounds like the plan is to put the food trucks behind Conrad's. Little bit of misinformation there as a side note. I don't have any reference for this information, so I cannot research it accurately. However, in my opinion, it is a great way to utilize the empty lot. It would also bring life to that area of town, create an outdoor oasis for dining amongst a pandemic employee entertainers, ending at 8:00 p.m., which is fear for the neighboring properties. Give opportunity to local chefs, entrepreneurs who need, uh, an affordable start. Foster community, bring something to Foxborough that other towns do not have, and give us a soul and identity other than the corporate commercialism of Gillette Stadium. As an aside, I'm not against Gillette Stadium, as there are room for local thriving businesses that bring character to this town amongst the corporate giants. The very few negative comments on the fee are related to noise issues for residents in that area. If the property is fenced and landscaped properly, that can reduce noise levels. Uh, one would assume that this seasonal business, which lessens any disruption to neighbors to approximately four to six months of the year. Uh, those few voices are loud, and I implore you to look at the Facebook post on Foxborough Discussion and see the positive comments. All the best, Jill Lindberg. So, um, I think, um, you know, we, we, we have a plan going forward. I, I think Planning Board, um, going to that meeting, listening in on that meeting on the 8th is going to be certainly important, um, for me. Um, any other comments, um, before?
May I make one comment? And Paige, if you're still on, just a thought. Um, I know you have the area of the Planning Board site that has current projects. Um, I know this isn't your typical project, but may I suggest maybe adding this here in advance of the April 8th meeting, just so if people want to get out and take a look at the site plan, it allows them to do so in a way that's a little bit easier to see on the TV screen here.
We can do that. So for anybody's reference, that would be on the Planning Boards page on the town website. On the left side, you'll see a, a tab called, or a frame, whatever called, current projects. If you click on that, we'll have it under Shovel Town or some name similar. Um, and we should have that up tomorrow at some point. Give us, we might have to do some scanning, so it could take a little bit longer, but we'll get it up.
Thank you, Paige. Thank you, Leah. Uh, so I'll take a, a motion to table?
Well, we have to postpone this public hearing.
Can you do the public hearing?
Oh, 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 move to close.
With the continue, I would say, continue the public, the public hearing, and I think Stephanie has a motion to that effect, would be to your, effectively your next meeting.
Motion to continue the public hearing for Shovel Town Brewery, Inc., DBA, A Taste of Foxborough, to the April 13th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
And then, do we need a motion to postpone, or is that the only one?
That's the only action needed at this point.
Because it's a public hearing.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody.
No further actions pending at this point. No further actions pending at this point.
All right, um, uh... Uh, Department Head Semrec, tad behind.
It's a little...
Brief.
Tried, guys, I really did.
Rob, you still out there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Time to get up.
I see you actually made, did you make it home? Are you, no, you're still in your office?
Yeah, I'm still at, still at Semrec.
All right, okay. All right.
All right, so, um, although, you know, normally we have, um, you know, our, our department heads, uh, come speak and, and give us an update. He's not necessarily a department head, um, in the town of Foxborough, but a, certainly an important part of Foxborough. So, um, Bill and I decided it wouldn't be a bad idea, um, especially with, um, Semrec up and running and, and doing well. From what we understand that, um, Bob, uh, Rob, give us a, an update. So, you're on.
Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman and the board. Thanks for having me back. It's always a pleasure. Um, so we just wanted to give a, take the opportunity to give a brief update about, uh, where we stand as Semrec and obviously very exciting time for us as we moved into our new building, uh, at the beginning of the year. Um, so, uh, this is a, a nice panoramic picture of just inside of our operations center a couple of days after we went live. So as a part of Semrec's transition, just to kind of recap, obviously, we took on full 911 operations for the town of Foxborough back in July of 2019. Um, and as part of that planning process, we intended on taking Wireless Direct on, um, sometime after that. We actually took it on the, the first day of operation, which was huge. And what that means is that, um, like I've said probably a couple dozen times at this point, when you call 911 in Foxborough from your cell phone or from a, uh, landline, you come right to us and we can dispatch, uh, members of the public safety community, uh, directly from here. Uh, no more transfers to the state police, now the state 911 department. So all those calls come right to us. Uh, we're happy to report that we are fully operational with our four member communities, so Foxborough, Easton, Mansfield, and Norton. Uh, and they went operational in early and mid-December of this year as we moved into our new facility. And now we're into the, kind of the, uh, getting everything leveled out and getting comfortable with our, our new building and new staff. Um, and moving into that, really digging into the tech, technology, procedural, and just, um, modernizing how we do business as a 911 department and, um, in public safety in general. The world is certainly changing around us very quickly and we want to stay relevant to the needs of our communities. Um, just through our review, taking on Wireless Direct in our, our processes, we've shaved an average of two and a half to three and a half minutes off of, uh, a 911 call, especially when you account for those, uh, transfers through the state. So when you call 911, you're in, online with one of our telecommunicators, our communications officers, who are certified in advanced medical dispatch protocols and, uh, advanced call-taking procedures. And while you're on the phone with them, help is already started to you in the background because we have a tremendous team that can, uh, act and operate efficient, efficiently. Um, like I stated previously, wireless calls come directly here. Um, and we are, uh, that advanced emergency medical dispatch center. Uh, we're working on our accreditation, which is a, uh, we hope to achieve by the end of the year. That'll be a huge milestone. We'd be one of the first, if not the first, in the Commonwealth to attain that. Uh, and we're very close and on track for that. Uh, but what that means is when you call for help, we're able to assist, uh, a caller in a medical situation with, uh, you know, controlling bleeding, CPR instructions, delivering a baby, uh, or administering medications and a, a myriad of other, uh, interventions before help arrives. Um, last year, calendar year, we took about 25,000 911 calls. Um, that is a tremendous amount of 911 calls. Uh, Foxborough, in comparison, prior to us going live, took about 5,500 911 calls. Um, a lot of that increase is due to, obviously, where we are two communities, but the wireless call. So if there is a car accident or a fire, um, if seven people, 10, 20 people call 911, we get every single one of those 911 calls. Versus previously with the state, they would kind of act as a goalkeeper and make sure that the smaller centers aren't inundated. But, um, since we're a wireless center and a regional center, uh, we have the depth of staff to absorb those, those, uh, calls. Uh, our average answer time is 3.1 seconds. Uh, the state and federal guidelines and regulations require us to answer in 10 seconds. Um, average call is about a minute 41 seconds. That doesn't mean call to dispatch, that just means total time with a caller. And our compliance with, uh, state regulations is 99.63% uh, for last year. Uh, the state, for us to kind of pass, requires us to be 95% compliant. So that's, uh, by a large margin, uh, compliant. This year so far, we've taken 12,548 calls and these are as of, uh, last week sometime. So we're already not even done with the first quarter and we're half of our call volume from last year, which is, uh, amazing. Uh, but it is certainly a tremendous amount of calls and we're kind of in a, a valley, kind of coming out of a valley, uh, from COVID. Um, we've reduced our call-taking time to three seconds, not by much, but, you know, even the decimals count. And our average call is about one minute 45 seconds now. Uh, we're 100% compliant so far for the year, which I'm happy to report. This is just a, kind of a cool thing to look at. This is our call distribution. Um, each one of these is out of 50. So our busiest time is, uh, Thursday at about 6 o'clock. So, um, these are some of the tools we use to analyze how we, uh, staff and how we, uh, adapt and expect calls. Uh, quick update on our beautiful new facility at High Rock. I'm sure you remember back, uh, when we first showed pictures, it was graffiti, it was a mess, it was overgrown. It was kind of gross and it was an attractive nuisance. Uh, there was, uh, I, I apologize to Chief Grace, Grace up and down for the, the impact on his, uh, call, call statistics because we, uh, we started putting up cameras and reporting crimes up there, which kind of made a big bright red spot on the map for him. But, um, now it's all secured and, uh, we have a, a extremely secure facility. Um, it, it came out fantastic. Um, we were on time, on budget, which was a true challenge, at least at the time was, uh, with COVID. Uh, we were originally about two or three months ahead of schedule. Uh, and then March came and we kind of went back onto schedule. We were kind of sweating it as far as the timeline. We had a tremendous amount of, um, obviously staffing issues and regulatory issues, but supply chain issues where we ordered HVAC equipment months and months out and the, the day before it's supposed to get delivered, they call and cancel because they just didn't have them. Um, so we were able to work closely with our project management team and the contractor, who was fantastic to, uh, source these elsewhere and, and get the project back on time. Um, and we actually came in a little under budget, which was great. So we're able to, um, make up some of the, the lost time and do some other nifty things. Um, just some pictures of the facility. Um, on the left was a before, after we started cleaning up. So this is sort of an improvement, um, and from the same aspect from our gate. Um, we tore down about 8,000 square feet of the facility. Um, it wasn't worth, it was, this building was constructed in several phases. Um, the phase that we tore down was the original phase and it was cinder block and kind of, uh, would require a tremendous investment just on mothball. Uh, so we saved a considerable amount of money, opened up some permeable space and some parking, planted some grass and, uh, got some natural light into the facility. This is, uh, same perspective. This is one of the most stunning pictures, I think. Um, so this is our training room and emergency operations center, uh, where we conduct meetings. And, uh, we actually had a couple of our public board meetings up here, uh, conduct training. And it has the ability to absorb some of our operations as well if we need it. Um, and to the left is from the, just about the same perspective prior to, uh, construction being complete. And this is the operations center. Again, same perspective. We have 10 positions fully equipped in the center. Uh, we built it with expansion in mind. We have a, almost a list now of communities looking to join us, which is, uh, tremendous for the communities and for the operation here at Semrec. So we, we, we built 10. Uh, we have the ability to go up to about 10 or 14 more in the facility. In the space we built out, everything's pre-wired and kind of planned out already. And then we have expansion, uh, capabilities behind, uh, that back wall. This is our lobby. Our basement, we had to put modern fire protection and, uh, cabling in. We have about 64 miles of data cable that we installed in the facility. And these tanks hold, uh, water for a fire suppression sprinkler system. And they're, uh, we actually used some of the, the building's features to offset, um, like this, for example, makes up the evaporation of this water off the, the roof drainage. And that's the, uh, the outside of the facility. Another picture of our training room. Um, so we were operational prior to us moving into High Rock, um, which means we had a fully operational 911 center with, uh, two communities worth of 911. Actually, we had all four communities worth of 911, two communities worth of dispatch, Mansfield and Foxborough. Um, and we can't just turn it off and move and turn it back on when we're done. Um, so this was a quite, the building was an undertaking. This was, uh, quite the undertaking. So we partnered with, uh, another regional center in Duxbury. It's called the Regional Colony Communication Center, or ROK. Um, and we partnered with them, adapted similar technologies. We actually interfaced our two centers together. And what we did was we completely, uh, what we call cooped over in, in the ROK. Uh, we had full access to our CAD, which is our, our dispatching software, our radio system and 911. Uh, so a, a flip of a switch, we had copy and paste Semrec up in Duxbury and they can now do the same thing at High Rock. So we moved our, we kind of did a leapfrog. We moved our operation of Duxbury, shut down our, our temporary facility at the JPS building, moved up to High Rock, got ourselves settled, did a bunch of testing, commissioned the new 911 system at High Rock and then decommissioned our temporary site at the ROK. Um, so that was extremely beneficial for our transition. And now this gives us the ability that if, if something happens at High Rock, we had a fire or some other reason that we needed to evacuate, um, we could actually go to Duxbury and they can take over our operations temporarily without missing a beat. Um, and the same thing for the ROK, they can actually do the same thing. We can just log right into their systems and keep going. Um, they're obviously a hurricane-prone community, so, um, we figured that this might actually come into, uh, come to play. So that's exciting. This is the first two, uh, regional centers in the Commonwealth to have these capabilities. Uh, this is just some more pictures of our staff. So the, the left two pictures is, uh, Semrec employees up at, uh, the Regional Colony Center alongside their staff. So they were actually running, uh, two regional centers out, out of their brand-new facility. Um, the upper right-hand picture is our new staff. Uh, we had to double in size to accommodate the new communities. So we didn't have any furniture, uh, office furniture, that is, when we first moved in. So we were working off of, you know, portable tables and some dispatch chairs and offices. Uh, the deputy director, Eric Berg, and I were working off of milk crates and, and whatever else we can, you know, doors on their sides until we got our office furniture in. But all the dispatch consoles came in right on time. Bottom right-hand picture is, uh, the day of transition. So you can even see the, the clock on the 911 center is not even on yet. Uh, and the Mansfield Fire Chief grabbed me and said, "Hey, let's grab a picture." Uh, some more pictures. Uh, this is our, one of our new staff members, Ally Vico. She's dispatching a call. This was a picture that was featured, um, in Donna Whitehead's, um, articles. Um, recently, our staff was, um, kind of started up their own food drive and we donated quite a bit of food to the, uh, Foxborough Food Pantry. Um, that, that was probably about a quarter of the food that the staff themselves actually, uh, collected and donated. And the bottom left, we use the facility, uh, to, to do some co-op training with our, our partners with the, the regional SWAT teams. Uh, you have Norfolk County Sheriff's SWAT Command Vehicle, the Metro elect community, uh, Community SWAT Command Vehicle and Plymouth County's, uh, same thing. So great interaction between the, uh, the SWAT command staff, which several of our, uh, staff members are part of, and the, and our regular staff to kind of see how the, the two interface. Um, upper left-hand picture is the new center, right after we opened, mitigating one of our, uh, or handling one of our storms that came through here. You can see the, the radar in the upper right-hand corner is not too happy. Um, but the facility proved its, its worth. Um, they barely knew the winds picked up, the, the building's so rock solid. And as we surged during the storm, we were able to staff additional desks without having to, you know, reach over each other like we did in the old facility. It was kind of comical, the old facility, we had a storm tear through and there wasn't enough phones for people and desks for phones and people are, you know, it was like a game of Twister just to, to get all the calls handled. Um, upper right-hand corner is, um, the state's hazmat dog came for training, used our basement facility for, you know, just another, um, training grounds for scent detection. His explosive detective's dog, or she is, it's Kona. Um, and the bottom, bottom center picture is our staff prior to going live in Foxborough, just doing some stadium familiarization. Uh, the, the gentleman in the middle, Nick Goyad, probably had three or four layers of, uh, TB12 jerseys on. He was very excited. Um, so that's all I have for pictures. I, I just wanted to take this opportunity to kind of have a, a plug for 911. Um, we, we keep wanting to champion just our message of call 911 if you think you have an emergency. If anyone's out there and they're like, "I don't know if I should call 911 or not," it's probably a good time to call 911. Uh, you don't have to look up, you, you don't have to Google a number for the police department if you need help. Uh, if you need a police officer respond, if you need a fire department response, an ambulance, if your smoke detector's beeping. I'd rather take calls that we, you know, maybe aren't an emergency, but we'll get you the help you need versus have a call, go somewhere where it shouldn't. There's only one emergency number in, in the entire, uh, United States and it's 911. Think of it as your VIP line to get the help you need really quick. It's the fastest customer service you'll ever get. There's no hold, there's no... We just get you the help you need, no questions asked. Well, there's a lot of questions, but no questions that would pull you from getting help. So I'd be happy to take any questions if there's, if there is any.
I, I just want to say, Rob, you've done incredible. I can remember a couple of years ago when I was chairman, going up there with you and Mike and touring that dilapidated bunker that was up there. And to see these pictures now, um, it's beyond state-of-the-art and, and just congratulations on, on all of the initiatives and everything. You know, collectively as a team that, that you've all been able to put into place. It's just, it's incredible. So kudos to you and the team.
I appreciate it. I appreciate the, the hospitality of, uh, Foxborough. Uh, Chief Grace and Chief Keller have been, you know, partners and mentors and, uh, certainly part of the team as well.
Any other comment?
I spent the first 10 years of my career, I think I told you, Rob, the first time we met in call center management doing HR benefits and pension questions. And it was tough. I can't even imagine what it's like staffing, you know, to answer emergency questions and you just seem to do it so flawlessly, you know, like Chris said. So congratulations. It seems like things have just gone really well, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And why don't you plug, um, uh, we've, we all got invitations to, uh...
Yeah, so, so we sent invitations out to you that, which we, uh, we got this week for the actual official ribbon cutting, which is going to be held on the 16th, Rob? Is that, is that correct? On April 16th?
Correct, 16th at 11.
And, uh, it'll be, uh, it'll be starting at 11 o'clock. And, um, we were going to try and do that back in, um, in, uh, I guess November, December. But obviously, we were in the, the strict COVID environment, so now things are starting to loosen up a little bit so we can have more, a few more people there. Uh, obviously face coverings will be required, uh, for, for the event. But, um, yeah, I, I just, you know, just for two seconds, want to say thanks to Rob and everything he's done and, and to Eric, you know, that... I think the two of them, they, they just pretty much lived there. I don't think that, I don't think they have homes, uh, even though they, he tells me he has a, has a house in Rantham. But I don't, I don't know that he's, his wife has a season, but, um, but he's just an incredible guy and I think, and Eric's equally is incredible. And, and the whole team, the whole team is just, I mean, they, they do terrific training together. Um, and it's, this is the dream that we all talked about, was, was something, when this thing taught, when we started, we started having these conversations, Mike and both Mikes and back in, you know, back in, uh, 2016, 2017, this was sort of like the vision that we had to try and develop this into a, um, into a, into a state-of-the-art facility. And Chief, and, and Chief Ed here was, was part of that discussion too. And it was something that, I don't think we could have visioned it quite the way it is now because it's just way beyond my, my expectations. So I want to say thanks to, thanks to Rob and his team for doing this.
Yeah, I, I remember that first meeting. I'm sure you were there, Chris, too, in Mansfield, where we all, uh...
There was a lot of, I mean, just a lot of hurdles, community-wise, trying to get to even agreeing to, to enter into an agreement. And then to see this finished product is just, it's amazing.
Mike?
From a, um, you know, customer service perspective, I have to say, Rob talked about the going through this credentialing. And, uh, my family and I had occasion this winter to make two 911 calls. And the, the, your staff was absolutely incredible, um, in directing my father and I on exactly what to do, how to respond, how to be prepared as the, um, as the two Mikes staff were, were on their way to my father's home. And, uh, incredible that they're not already credentialed and, uh, you know, so kudos. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Looking forward to, uh, seeing you again on the 16th.
Yeah, absolutely. Looking forward. Hopefully we'll have it this time. We've, we've planned a couple of ceremonies that have kind of gotten blown up.
Pushing it off, so...
A lot. We're going to get this one done this time.
All right, thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Good night.
Good night. All right, onto something a lot easier. All right, onto something a lot easier. Um, budget review and recommendations.
Okay. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, um, yeah, I mean, I, I think, I hope you said that tongue, tongue in cheek. But quite honestly, this is actually a, a good news story in many ways as well. So I don't want to, um, I'm not getting my thing to come up. So it's not working here. Let me see. I think it just froze on me. Uh, okay. There we go. So the, the Foxborough budget for FY22 has been under discussion review for several months now. And as, as we said to you from the beginning, there's going to go through several iterations before we get to that point. And, um, of course, I'm not getting any kind of reception here. So it's just, um, it's not coming up. You got, yeah, thank you.
First attachment?
Yeah, thanks. Sure. So what's happened is that we've gone through all the iterations that we thought was going to happen. And, and in the end, a couple of good things happened to us and that were, were consistent with what we had expected. And thanks, Mike. So we had indicated that at the outset, that we thought our budget was going to be up somewhere around 3.5, 3.6 in terms of overall increase. And then with the town side of the budget going up under 3%, probably 2.7, 2.8, um, in, in that range. And then with the school budget being up over 3. But now, as we finish the process, the total general fund operating budget is going to come in at 2.76 in total. So, which is a significant drop from, from what we initially had indicated. Um, the, what's great about that is the fact that we were able to maintain services. And, and by the way, if you look at the historical perspective of this, this is the second year in a row we've come in around 2.8 overall in terms of increases. So we've stayed under 3%. So folks that have said to us in the past, you know, let's try and keep the budget down. Well, we've done that to the best we can. And I think it's reflected in virtually everything we do. So the good news is that we were able to save money on the health insurance side. Our pension assessment came in lower than we expected. Our insurance costs dropped rather significantly this year as well. So I think, and then, and also our, our employee costs were, were actually relatively flat, say for the, for, for about a 2% cost of living adjustment for folks. And I think that's been consistently applied across the board. So overall, the total general government expenses are up, are at 2.88%. And the reason that it's different from the 2.76 number is the fact that we have an overlay amount that we have to use. And primarily, we had snow removal supplemental amount that we had to submit, that we had to include, that we can actually raise on next year's budget because that's allowed for under the state. And then we came in about $194,000 more than we anticipated. So that's what pushed that number up a little bit higher than, than we thought. As far as the, the different operations go, you can see that our overall budgets have, you know, in many cases came in either zero or below zero. In some cases, there were very few situations where the numbers went above the, the two, two and a half, two, two and a half percent guideline that we established way back in, I think it was in November of this past year. Save for the exception in the fire department where we had, we had three firefighters, or four firefighters that we had to pick up this year in terms of costs, it was a three, three Mike, that we had to pick up the cost for because the grant expired this year, well expires this current fiscal year and will start in the next, and won't be available to us the next fiscal year. So we had to pick up that cost. So at this point in time, I'm happy to take any questions. But generally speaking, you can see, and I know that George, as well as Maria are on, are on the phone call tonight, or, or in the audience, or in the Zoom, Zoom world, listening in as well. So if, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Questions?
I have more of a comment.
Okay.
Well, yeah. Um, you know, I think that we've gone through a number of these, you know, I know people that are just watching maybe this piece of the meeting don't realize everything that goes into, you know, leading up to this. Um, there's been a number of AdCom meetings. AdCom will meet again. I think it's either this week or next week. Um, you know, but we've gone through a lot of these line items. I'd say, you know, at least my personal biggest feedback has been, you know, using the least amount of free cash we can to balance the budget. Bill and I talked about that. He actually made some adjustments that, that I'm satisfied, satisfied with in this last round. So, um, you know, a lot of work has gone into this. And I think we're in, we're in a good place. And I think Foxborough's in a good place with COVID. And I think going forward for next year, you know, we do have some areas that we, that I, that I personally think we want to tweak, or maybe, you know, just kind of firm up as we go into the next year's budgeting process. But there's always going to be room to, you know, continue to improve the process. And I think we're, we're...
And I think, I think we're always open to that. And I appreciate that, that input because, and this was the first year we've actually used this new platform for, for budgeting, which I think has been terrific. And it really is. It shows very, it's very transparent to anybody who wants to look at it. It does a lot of analysis and, and can provide, and anybody who wants to look at it can do so online. So I think, um, my thanks to go to Marie and to George and, and to all this, all the department heads who did a terrific job of staying within the guidelines and following the, the direction that, that this board, the board, the, the, the school committee and the, and the advisory committee all set back several months ago to try and, try and keep the numbers down as well as we could. Um, I did note that, you know, if we are, in looking at, on a countywide basis, I looked at the increases across, across the county and where I think we're the fifth lowest, if I'm not mistaken, in terms of lowest, lowest amount of increase in, of other 28 communities. So I think we're, we're the, we're right, we're actually well below the median in that respect. So I think that's, that's good, that's, that speaks well to all the department heads who did what they could to try and stay and stay within lines. So I'm very much appreciative of that effort.
And just to echo about Maria, I mean, she's just been phenomenal. I just, I know we've said it before, but just say it again, that I think we're really grateful.
Yeah, we're very fortunate to have her.
That whole department, Maria, George, outstanding me too. I'm sorry?
Maria.
What was?
Maria, so speaking.
Yeah. Marie, go ahead. Were you there?
I'm sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, um, thank you. I appreciate the, the nice comments from you, Leah. Um, what I did want to mention as well was in regards to, um, our OPEB, um, the investment that we have. So even though we did not, uh, fund OPEB in FY21 and didn't plan on doing so in FY22, our, our investment actually grew by almost $2 million. So essentially, the two payments we didn't make...
Were made up.
Made themselves, we know with the, the investment earnings.
That'll make David happy.
Wherever Dave is right now.
That's right.
Well, that's, that's great news, Maria.
Great news. So, yeah, we, we actually, uh, that was, we found that out just literally about a week ago and we're saving that announcement for tonight. But for the most part, and just letting people know that was really good news that we've, that we've learned. So excited about that and appreciate all the efforts gone into that as well. And, and it's also interesting to note too, by the way, that I did see a, an analysis done of the entire county. And it shows that, that Foxborough is the second, uh, best community in the entire 28 communities of, of OPEB funding. And that, and we're number one in terms of retirement of that debt in terms of time. So we're supposed to retire that debt by 2035, based on the current analysis. And, and the, and the pension retirement is, it still schedules for 2032. We have not seen the recent analysis of the investment returns on that, on that fund as of yet. But that's, that's still the schedule at this point. So the good news about that, we were talking about that. I was talking in, in length with, with Bill Yuchner and, 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 uh, and the superintendent today about Amy Burdos, about that particular aspect. But what's significant about that is that, you know, in, in that, by that time, the town will have freed up about three to four million dollars of extra, extra capacity, spending capacity, because we won't longer have to pay, make those payments to, to those, those different entities. And, um, and that's going to give the town a much more, better leverage, greater so than, than, than most of the other, than virtually every other community in, in, in the county. And I did say in the state, I think, I think on a state by the level, I think we're probably, we're, we were in the top five in terms of funding capacity. I do believe we're probably even, even still in that same range or even better at this point in time. So I'm very, very pleased to say that. The other thing is that we did meet with Standard and Poor's on Tuesday night of last week. Had a very good conversation about our bond rating. Um, we, uh, we, we were hoping to be able to announce that we've renewed the, the AAA rating, but we, we won't know until tomorrow morning. So, uh, so we, as soon as we do, I'll certainly let everybody know that. Um, and I may have to announce it at the, at the AdCom meeting instead. So, but I'll, I'll certainly let you know if, if I hear that in, in between. Uh, but that, you know, having, having said that, that's, that certainly speaks well of the entire community and how we've managed our finances over the years, whenever that happens. And they, they were very much impressed by the, by the way that we've managed that during the past year, especially during the pandemic situation. Um, trying to think, anything else, Marie, George, in terms of highlights that I can, I can, I can touch upon at this point? Um, one, one thing is that we did have a conversation today, um, with, with, with Amy and, um, and Bill about the, about the new care, uh, American Recovery, Recovery Fund, the, the Recovery Act, the, the American Recovery, Recovery Act. And we're at a point now where we're looking at ways in which those funds can be best used. We're still trying to understand all the, the moving parts. We were on a call last night with the congressman and his staff about, um, about how we can, how we can utilize those funds. I have a meeting scheduled for next, next Monday or Tuesday with the, the county, county executive to see how that money's going to be distributed back to the cities and towns, what the plan is for that. Uh, so I'll have a better handle on that situation. We scheduled that meeting today, following the comments of, of the meeting last night. So we want to try and get a better handle on that and understanding of that. And then, uh, we did say that, that we think it's probably best for us to come up with a plan to present to all of the, the three boards, the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the, and the AdCom, to see how we can best utilize those funds that are coming into the town. And to have your collective input on that to see if we're, if we're moving in the right direction with that.
Just as, if I could cut you off, just as a review though.
Yes.
There are some funds coming to the town.
Yes.
Some funds going to school.
Correct.
And some funds going to the county.
That's correct.
Which was supposed to be distributed.
That's right.
To the towns.
What's the time on that again? Just reminding, is it June, July?
Yeah. So, so the first payment that's coming to the town is about 45 days from now. And that's a direct payment that the town will see. The town's going to receive about $1.8 million from the federal government. Um, last time I saw that was in federal revenue sharing back in the, in the eighties. Uh, so this is a really unique situation. Um, we're going to see that, um, that, we're going to see one half of that payment, which is about $900,000 coming to the town. Uh, the second payment will be next year, about the same time, uh, which is a question that I really didn't get to with, with the congressman, but I want to follow up with his staff on is, why, why do we have to wait that long for that? Especially where our, our fiscal year begins in July. And then what that second payment will come in sometime around May or June. So we, it'd be better if we had the payment earlier in the fiscal year than later. This payment will be, will be in a position, it'll be difficult for us to even do anything with, given the fact that we'll only have like, like 30 to 40 days to actually use it. So I think...
Does it have to be spent in the fiscal year?
It doesn't have to be. That's the good news about that. That's, see, that, it can be used as, as revenue replacement as well. And it could be, and it could be carried forward into the next fiscal year. But we do have until, I think, 2024 to spend it.
Do we have to specifically spend it on COVID related stuff?
No, we do not. It was actually, there was actually, the, the guidance, we're still waiting for specific guidance from the Treasury's office, from the, from the Treasury Secretary Yellen's office. But we have, but the general guidelines, as the congressman indicated last night, is that we will be in a position where we will not have to, where the, there are very few things you, you can't not spend it on. And one was the pension system. And the other one was, um, that you couldn't use it to reduce taxes. All right. So they said if you did any one of those things...
Because that would help people.
Yeah, true. But, but, but I think, but I also, but the reason why they didn't want to do that is because it's a one-time hit.
Yeah.
And I think you don't want to be, you know, creating that situation.
And his big push was, uh, infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yeah. Use it for infrastructure.
For infrastructure, which in the whole scheme of things, if that replaces other funds for interest, infrastructure.
Yeah.
Yeah, frees up.
It frees up. What did he call it? A sponge effect or something?
Yeah, fungible, 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 fungible effect, yeah. So in some ways, it actually does affect it that way.
Yeah.
So we, we do want to be in a position where we'll have a plan, you know, to, to, to put forward, to try and let the policymakers decide how they want to use those funds. And then, and, and including up until the fact that we just let it fall to free cash, I mean, which is another option.
Build a new maintenance facility for the fire department.
There you go.
Ooh!
Don't give me any ideas.
Get about a half a dozen, maybe a dozen towns in there.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Couple of mechanics.
Yeah. Well, that'll be, that'll be a new enterprise completely at that point, right? So, um...
Bring police over.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
All right. Doc, get your meeting back on track.
All right, sorry. Hey, you started it.
So, so that's, that's really the latest updates on where we stand.
All right. Any, any questions from the board on the budget?
I have a comment. Um, uh, up until maybe a couple of minutes ago, I, um, I was honestly not going to vote for this budget. Uh, it was nice to hear Marie say that, um, I mean, some of the reasons why, um, not for lack of not trying on everybody's part. I think, um, for me, I felt like when I ran for this board, I talked about fiscal, fiscal responsibility. I keep hearing of people who are, um, are barely keeping their jobs, taking pay cuts, um, you know, and that's no one else's fault but myself for not, um, understanding the whole process. Like I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, that it might have been better for me to be speaking up sooner than later. But once we got to a certain point in the budget, it, you know, it, it, it then became hard to step back. Um, I am going to vote for this budget. And I know a lot of people put a lot of hard work into it. I would just say that, um, kind of a little bit what Leah said, maybe for the future, us really trying to be as lean as we can, only because I, I think the effects of COVID, I think it's great that we got some bailout, some aid, um, you know, which I, I know, Bill, that, that's, um, your expertise, you know, kind of projecting, or even George and, and Maria on what might have been coming in. So, um, I still think that we're, we're gonna, we may, we're maybe in a little trouble going down the road. I mean, now they're saying that, um, you know, there'll probably, will be no concerts, you know, this, this year. Maybe, we'll see what happens. I know Kenny Chesney was planning on coming in. Now that's been moved. So, um, I respect everybody's hard work. I don't want anyone to think that that isn't the case. I think I was just, um, maybe a little nervous that I didn't do everything that I had told people I would try to do to help them with some relief. But, um, I am going to support this budget, but I just felt like I just had to kind of say what my concerns were. That's all. And it's not for any lack of extreme effort on, on this board, everybody who works in Bill's office and is part of the budget process. But, um, you know, I, um, after listening to some of the things tonight, I feel a little more comfortable in, in, in supporting it. But I did have to just, at least to say what some of my concerns were too. And so...
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other comments, uh, should we vote on it now or vote on it as part of the warrant?
So I think what, what you can do, it's entirely up to you. But if you want to, it just, you could be, it would be a vote to recommend the budget as presented.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we actually have a motion to do this, that. Motion to approve the proposed FY22 budget as presented by the town manager.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks again for everybody that's worked so hard on this budget in a very trying time of the year.
I appreciate that.
Or trying year.
And I want to, again, I want to say thanks to, to the finance team, George and Marie, and everybody else. And Mike, Mike who worked tirelessly to try and get the contracts done. And Christina and Katie and everybody on our team that's been doing every, yeoman's work to try and get this finished up. So thank you for that. So moving on to the, to the warrant. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, I just have a suggestion to you. And it's like, again, this is not an attempt to try and subvert any of the process, but just to try and help the process along, my suggestion would be that you go through the warrant, and if there's any one particular item that any member of the board wants to pull out, that you, that you do that, and then just set the others aside and just vote on those as a block. And then decide how you want to deal with that beyond that. So as I, so you don't end up spending an enormous amount of time just going through one by one.
All right. So should I list all the warrants? Is, or, or just, is there, no. So is there any, I was just going to list them, not go over them. But having looked at Leah's eyes, is there any warrant articles that we would want to take out and discuss? I'm comfortable with the entire warrant. I'm comfortable with the entire warrant. Is there any one?
I'm comfortable with the entire warrant, I just have to say, some of these older agreements, I can't say I've looked at recently, like, the union agreements that kind of go back.
Those are the one-year agreements.
Yeah, the old fiscal years, though, are there other ones?
It was a previous fiscal year.
But I'm comfortable with everything in the warrant, maybe, no, okay. I was going to say, do we need to maybe just talk about the citizens petitions, but I support every article in here.
Yeah, I have no issues with any of them, and just to your point on the contracts, they were all reviewed and voted on here, is just another time.
Missed the, yeah.
Yeah.
You comfortable with voting with the warrants?
I'm good.
Ed? Let's take a motion then, that's great.
Okay.
So we go through 25 and discuss the citizen petitions.
Yeah, so you can do one through 25, and then the citizen petitions, you already voted on one of them.
Yeah.
The other one is one that still has not been acted on, so, all right, you want to go one through 26 now. The one thing that I will suggest, I'll just say my piece on this, because I do think that Article 26 is one which is, I think, is not a good thing for the town, and I just want to say my piece about that, even though, listen, it's not my community, but I manage it, and I take great pride in that, and I think it's important that the process, I've got to say that the process that currently is in place now works well. I've yet to hear anybody say what's wrong with the process that's been put in place, and I think that's where I'm having the biggest amount of concern with this, is that, by substituting a new process for one that's not broken, I think it's a challenge. And so I'll just say that, and the board can do anything they want with it, but ultimately, that's just my piece on it.
Well, one thing I was going to say, and that would be to approve one through 25, because I agree with you on 26. I think we should take that separately and vote on it separately. Is everybody okay with that?
So, let me just, we're voting to approve the entire?
To recommend, to recommend.
Oh, to recommend, okay, I thought it was to approve.
To recommend, yeah. Because ultimately, town meeting approves everything, you just recommend, and these will then go to the AdCom, and then the AdCom makes its final, and its final recommendations are the ones that go on the warrant, in the report.
So we're just recommending the articles?
That's right.
The articles are there.
That's right.
But if we, for instance, on, and I'll pick Article 22, if we all said, we don't recommend it, it stays on the warrant, right?
Correct.
It stays on the warrant, yeah, it's just, but it would carry an indication that the board didn't support it.
It would be printed in the book, like the AdCom recommendations, which we haven't always done at a board of selectmen level.
No.
So this is a little bit different.
But that was, you wanted that at one point, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I think AdCom actually wanted it, from what I understand.
I think it makes sense, especially when you, because all of the other articles are ones that we've seen, we know, and it's when you get into these citizen petition ones, I think it's critical to have.
And it's a little tricky, because ultimately, it's your warrant, but yet it's the advisory committee's report that goes to town meeting.
Right.
So it's up to them if they want to include your recommendation or not, it's really their call.
Right, okay.
Do you want our comments on 26 now, or do you want to reserve that for the conversation?
Let's do one through 25.
Yep.
And then we'll bring up 26 separately.
And then 27.
We already voted on 27.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did vote on it, yeah, right.
27's actually been voted on.
There's just the motion in there, just to reconfirm that we vote on the whole entire one.
Okay.
And we can't see those motions, so again, I know Stephanie has them, but when I review and when I sit here in the meeting, I really feel pretty strongly that I like to have the motions, Chris, I don't know if you agree, just to know.
Well, we have usually partial wording on it.
Yeah, we don't have, there's a number of them tonight, though, that we don't have, that I just like to, I like to see what's in there ahead of time, you know, for the mindset, and, you know, just to kind of read along during the meeting.
True.
All right, motion to unanimously recommend the following 2021 annual town meeting articles, Articles 1 through 25.
And 27? Or we already voted?
Very, we voted 27.
You can say 27 for the sake of the article, for this discussion.
Okay.
And 27.
And 27.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, why don't you make a motion for Article 26, and we'll bring it up for discussion.
Okay. Motion to recommend, hold on one second, let me just make sure I word it correctly. Motion to recommend the annual town meeting article number 26.
Second.
All right, for discussion. Bottom line, I totally agree with Bill. I think it's just a duplicative, another layer of oversight that we just don't need. I think we have the oversight, not only with the CIP committee, but with AdCom.
I 100% agree, and one of the questions I asked when they were in front of us a month or so ago was if, because they're really talking about two people on this board that aren't residents, so if Bill lived in Foxborough and Amy lived in Foxborough, everybody would be fine with it. I mean, with those two people, I mean, they're subject matter experts, there is enough, we know for five years what's on the CIP, everybody does, it's not a secret. I've sat in the room on that Saturday and gone through the process, it's a very well-vetted process, I don't think it needs another layer of anything, and that's just my opinion.
All right, I'm going to respectfully disagree with both of you. I heard this, this article is being brought up by somebody different than originally brought it up. I know I mentioned it before, and I think, Doc, you shook your head at me, but that article was recommended, voted yes on by all five sitting board members at the time. At town meeting, it missed by, Doc?
I didn't.
You did. I looked at it, you know. It's okay to say, it was brought forward by Sean McCarthy. I know Sean sat down with every board member individually and discussed the article, and it was supported by every board member. It was not supported by Bill, it was not supported.
I'll respectfully disagree, because he never sat down personally with them.
Well, I thought he told me that he had conversations with the board members. If I'm misspeaking, so be it, but what I, which doesn't mean you have to, doesn't mean you have to agree with it now, I'm not, but I, there is a lot of merit to this. It was funny, because when Shelby, when you asked your question and she answered, I thought it was strange that she answered the way she did, so I asked her afterwards, and, you know, you don't have to believe me or not, she misspoke. It really, the merit of the article is for it not to be any employee, doesn't matter if they live in town or doesn't. The article is, so, and some of the arguments about that article were, well, who knows their budget better than the person presenting it? Okay, I'll give you that, but what does the school superintendent know about DPW? What does DPW know about the school? You know, and?
They'll work in and in, day in, day out.
Oh, no, no, but I'm saying you're asking that person to vote on something that they don't have any expertise of. I mean, it doesn't matter, if you guys don't support it, that's fine, but I think the merit of the article was to have an independent board look at the CIP items and put a lot of time into them, not just a member from AdCom, a member from the Board of Selectmen. You know, it doesn't mean, doesn't mean you guys have to support it now, but, you know, I just want to make some corrections that this narrowly, and I don't know what will happen at town meeting, I mean, regardless of what we recommend, it will be voted on at town meeting floor, but the first night it lost by one vote, and the second night it lost by six. So I just want to make it clear that it, that a lot of people in town were interested in this article, it doesn't mean we have to support it, you know, everyone has, tells their opinion, but, you know, the first time around, it was, it was voted 5-0, and then one board member changed at town meeting, and AdCom supported it 9 to 2. So whether, I don't know what AdCom's going to do tomorrow night, it's a whole new board, I just want to make sure that, there's a lot of meat to that article, doesn't mean that we have to support it, but I just didn't want it to make it sound like that, and, you know, I'm not going to get into it tonight, but, you know, the process isn't perfect, and I don't even know if we're following the bylaw as it's written now, when we're meeting, on who is supposed to be represented at that table that day. So, yeah, so, you know, it's not that it's broken, I think it could be better, is basically my opinion, and like I said, it's just my opinion. You guys are absolutely entitled to your own, and I just want to make it clear that this was something that was very, that was almost passed last time, and so, that's all, I just want to say my piece about it, and what, you know, what the board, how the board viewed it, when it did come up two years ago. And, you know, like I said, doesn't mean you guys have to support it now.
Where do you get, and this is just clarification, how do you know how we voted on this at town meeting?
No, you could look at, look at the.
From the selectmen's.
Yeah, from the thing, and I got that from Sean. I wasn't exactly sure, I was pretty sure.
Getting it second-hand information.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, Sean sat before, Sean had to present the article to you guys, and you guys had taken, so, yeah, I mean, if you, I mean, if you want me to pull up the meeting and reference the meeting, I would be happy to do that.
I thought you had said that at town meeting, we all voted for it.
Oh, I saw how the vote went down at town meeting. I was sitting on that stage as an advisory committee member, and one member didn't support it at town meeting, everybody else raised their hand in support of it at town meeting, except one board member. So that doesn't mean you have to support it now, but I'm just saying that it's, it's not that there's no merit to this article, and however you want to support it or not support it this time around is absolutely up to everybody.
Any other comments?
I guess I'll just say, I think you all know, I typically have strong opinions one way or the other, and, you know, honestly, on this one, it's not one that I feel, I see some of Bill's points, and I see, you know, some things that Stephanie's saying, I'm kind of somewhere in the middle, I do kind of think, in some respects, it's not broken, but I will say, I have had a couple of people reach out to me in support of this, and, you know, it was close last time, so I probably will support it, you know, but sometimes I lay in bed and I think about it, and I, I kind of go back and forth, so, you know, my vote will probably be to support it and let it go to town meeting and let the citizens decide, I guess is.
But, I mean, whether we support it or not, it's going to town meeting.
Exactly, so, you know.
Yeah, it has to go anyway.
Yeah.
All right, any other thoughts? Well, I think mentioning the fact that people will make up their own mind independently on what they think is best for the community, and, like you said, Doc, and other people, it's going to be a vote at town meeting, you know, what the citizens believe is critical and necessary to continue the government's operation in our community, and that's what each of us are trying to do, to represent the people that live here in our community. So. All right. All those in favor of recommending this, is that the right terminology?
Yeah, recommending the article, that's right.
Recommending the article. Raise your hand. All those opposed? Three to two opposed. All right. Thank you. Let's move on to town manager's evaluation process.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, gentlemen.
You guys don't want to stay?
You don't want to say how we're going to evaluate?
Come on, why give up now?
We're going to bring up the contracts for reconsideration.
Wait, can I leave too?
So, so I did send out a, you know, a template town manager evaluation form, and now it's up for discussion this evening, and, you know, I did have a board member reach out, Leah did reach out to me with what I thought was some good suggestions, and I'm sure she'll bring them up this evening, and that's what this evening is about, so if anybody read this at home and thought this is tonight, the town manager's getting evaluation, that's not what it's about. This is so that the town manager and the board selectmen can agree to the evaluation that's going to happen within this next month. So what I would suggest for a timeline is, once the board comes to an agreement, and I think the board will probably come to an agreement on what the instrument is this evening, that then we give the town manager two weeks to do his self-evaluation and submit it to all of you, and with that, I send whatever template you agree to this evening, so that then you have the next two weeks to complete your evaluation, and then, what we've done the last couple of years that seems to have worked, is that all those evaluations get sent back to me, they can be sent back to me by email, I mean, because we can make it as a fileable PDF, or they can, generally what people have done, is put them in a sealed manila envelope, and then the chairman of the board and I open them together, but, you know, I'm open to whatever is the desire of the board, you know, what the processes you'd like to use. So, so here's what this evaluation instrument consists of, the front part of it is the exact goals that the board, you know, put together, and they were, they were more extensive and more to the point, and probably in the, more in the interest of the town than anything I've ever seen, you know, in my time, working for the town. And so, for the, you know, for the folks who are sitting at home, the goals are broken into four main areas. The first goal is to protect and enhance the financial health of the town, second one is to protect and enhance the communication and engagement, third goal is protect and enhance business and economic development, fourth goal is protect and enhance town operations, and then every goal is broke down, broken down into many sub-goals, and I can read through these, or if you have them in front of you, I don't think I need to read through them.
No, we don't.
And then, and then there is a goal for each section, and Leah's suggestion, which I think has, you know, has some validity to it, is, you know, there can be a score at each subsection, so for goal one, there's, you know, A through F, each of those, and then each of those can be averaged into that, you know, score for goal one. So before I move towards the end of the evaluation tool, I want to just define what the scale is. So, in the town manager, in Bill's contract, he must score a satisfactory or better to get his performance raised, and that's all he gets, so he is not eligible for a COLA and any other sort of a raise, he's eligible for a performance raise. And so, on the scale that you have in front of you, it's scaled one through five. One is needs improvement, two is marginally met expectations, three is met expectations, four is exceeded expectations, and five is outstanding. What I suggest is that three, met expectation, be equivalent of satisfactory, but that's, you know, up to the decision of the board. And then, moving to the back of the, if the goal, of the instrument, of the, you know, the tabulation of the four different goals, and then averaging out those four different numbers, whether it's averaging the four numbers, or averaging the averages of the four, and coming up with a total score, that's the score from each board of selectmen member. And then the composite score would be the average of the five board of selectmen members, and that's the five members who have served on the board, you know, for the past year. I know there have been times when this evaluation has happened after a board member's off the board, it's still, in my opinion, should be the member that served, not the brand-new coming member, but the one who's served for the past year. And then, the, because, because of personnel, you know, protecting personnel records, we cannot take, you know, one of your entire evaluations and make a public record, or all of your records, all of your evaluations, so what we do is a, in addition to the composite score, which is. So what we do is a, in addition to the composite score, which is, you know, absolutely, that's, you know, we just give that to the public. But instead of taking the entire evaluation, we take a sampling, which includes the good, the bad, the constructive, the, you know, the compliments and, you know, middle of the road for from all of the the board. And that's where um, the the chairman and I, at least in the past, the chairman and I have sat down and looked through. It's got to be fair. It's got to, it's got to um, replicate what what are these evaluations saying as far as the comments? And then the last and probably the most important part of this is that each board member should contact the town manager directly and set up a time to review the um, the evaluation with him. Uh, because ultimately, evaluation is is a developmental tool. This is how we get better. So share your comments, share why you gave such and so scores. What can we, what can we do to improve in the next year?
Should that be done like after it's handed into you and Doc and you go through it, like after the?
That can be either.
I I prefer it before.
Yeah.
Only because it's an opportunity for me to really review things with you and then answer questions before we do you do the evaluation. That'd be my preference.
So um, that's what I have and and I'm open to um, you know, to your comments and and seeing how we can shape this into the best tool for you as a board to do your evaluation.
I just one clarifying question and either Leah with what she asked you or you can clarify it. So are you saying for each goal and then the sub-goals, we should rate the sub-goals and then that'll come up to the total?
What you see here to have a rating for every sub-goal. That would make a main goal average, then would average those four together.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense because I think that's how we did the old one, each category we rated.
Yeah, the only thing for me is timing. So the way it's written in Bill's contract is that it's for the the time period July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. I think your review is important, but you know, it's no secret you're out of here and that's two months shy of when it ends. But I, you know, so that's why I just kind of wanted to talk through timing of when this is happening. You know, do we do it in late April? And you know, we capture it as this board, do we do it?
I'll do it. I mean, if if we want to.
As a matter of practice, we've always done it in July, in April, so that the sitting board member was able to do it.
Right, but you know, looking at your contracts and how it survives, you know, looking at the dates, I don't, I don't know.
And the reason we did that was because, so that the sitting board member would have the ability to do that.
Right, but what I'm about to say is, I mean, if you want to change that, I'm fine doing this a month from now, just because I'm not on the board. I mean, I still have six years of of working with them and, you know, especially this last year. I mean, you know, it's not like the Fasail signs going on in the house the day after the election, you know, she won't let me. If if we want to change, but it's the, as long as I've been on the board, it's been in that timeframe of April to to May. And usually it comes right down to the wire of election.
Yeah, and the reason is that uh, Bill started in April. Um, and so we've gone April to April every year. His his new contract now, when I went back and reviewed it, it shows, you know, going through the end of June. Um, I think it still makes sense to do this by the end of April, but you know, whatever is the pleasure of the board.
As long as Bill feels that's fair, that he, there's two months, you know, if there's something that wasn't done, um.
Well, see, I I think what we've looked at that is being almost like an evaluation period between May and May to May, almost. And and the reason why is because um, it's been done that way is because, Mike's right, I I actually did start in April of uh, of 1/1. And then actually, if you look at my next contract, my my current contract, I'm I'm actually going to be done in March. In my, in March 31st, I'll be done. And I'll just be a consultant for three months.
I think we should keep it the April to April. Um, but I think when we create your goals next year, it should, it should reflect that time period.
I have a problem.
So the form will have to be revised, what you see here now. Um, we did put a definition, like Mike said, of what is satisfactory, because that's what Bill's um, contract says. It's it's subject to a satisfactory review. And then the only other thing I would say is I did have some feedback that I passed along to Bill. I don't know if you had a chance to talk to Mike about it. I don't necessarily agree with the collection. Um, based on some recent, I went to a January OML training and I can forward you the Q and A, but I do not think that based on the training and what is in writing on the AG site, that the chair should be the one collecting and opening it. It's in direct conflict with the with the OML training and the guidance.
Yeah, I don't I don't think he can collect them.
Well, Mike just said they're going to open them together from this.
He can, he can open them together to 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 do the final tally. He can do that. That's allowed. That's absolutely allowable.
I'm going to send it to you. I'm going to send it to you. Because I just did the training and even it does address is each individual review a public record. So I don't know that we need to get into it here, but I will send it to you guys. I I actually emailed it to myself when I went to the training, so I have it in an email. And then, you know, maybe we revisit little pieces of that.
That that's changing protocol that's been going on for decades.
I don't disagree with you on uh, about that at all.
Yeah.
Um, this this actually was a a little bit of a change of process or or actually solidifying a process um, when when Chris was the chairman. And it was because of comments about about, you know, me opening them and me doing the evaluation for my boss.
Yeah, I think it should, to be honest, I think it should be Sarah. I don't think it should be. I don't know that I agree that it should be you. And if, again, it's in the guidance about who it should be. So I'll send it to you guys to read it. I don't think we need to figure it out today.
Why Sarah versus Human Resources Director?
Just because it's come up in the past about he is a direct report, you know, of of Bill. And if you, you know, just kind of common sense, conflict of interest. Because of the nature of their relationship, I understand, you know, you have a level of professionalism that you, you know, maintain as an HR person. But I think it would even put both of you in a better position to have someone else possibly look at it, because that has come up a number of times in a number of years now, so.
Can you send it to Christina to send out to the entire board?
I can send it to Christina to send to everyone.
Interesting thought.
And I'll send it with, I'll I'll redo the email I have. I'll send it with the whole link. Um.
And and where was this training? I'm sorry.
So there was a, we all had to go to OML training in January. And actually, what my session focused on a lot was performance evaluations and a lot of the Q and A. Um, and then I started to kind of look at it online, you know, after that session. You know, when you think of OML, you don't think of performance evaluations, but there was a pretty big focus on that because questions like we're having must come up in other towns.
So do you think this is something we should refer to council?
Um.
Or can we?
I can also contact the AG's office. They're very good at answering questions and usually give back in a day or two just to.
I think we can make a decision. I think, yeah, just, I think you should just read it and then see what you're comfortable with.
Well, yeah, I think we should all read it and if if some of us are comfortable and some aren't, we need to get another outside.
You know, it wasn't something, but once I took the training, I was like, whoa, no, this is this is kind of in direct conflict to how we do it. So, you know, it even references some.
So it shouldn't interfere with the process?
No.
We could still go forward with the process and 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 do this.
If we can, yeah, if you all can decide what the instrument is or any adjustments you want made to this, um, then we can get that going and maybe by the next, you know, by your next meeting, have Bill's uh, self-evaluations done. And then by the meeting after that, have them all, or actually maybe even a little sooner that than that. So the two meetings from now, you could, you could actually conduct, you know, you know, do the whole thing um, and let the public know how it how it came out.
And as a board, maybe just for here right now, we can decide if we do it in Excel. It may make life a little bit easier for whoever does that, but I don't know if we as a board are comfortable with that and want to do it by paper.
I personally want to do it by paper.
Okay, so then.
But that's me. I mean, yeah, paper.
Paper, paper.
Paper.
So um, so I am going to be out of town until the 27th of April. So um, would it be best, Mike, if I were to hop on this as soon as I can and then be able to get it to you before I go, I'm going away on the 9th? So so that, so I can actually have it on paper and hand it to you?
I think that's fine. What we need to do is decide who, we just need to decide. We just need to decide who they're getting handed into. I I personally.
Oh, whether it's you or whether.
Well, it can be a signed envelope.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Personally, I don't care if they're coming to me or to my assistant Sarah. It it makes no difference to me. But as long as we decide that, I think some, like for me, when I evaluate um, employees, you know, folks that I evaluate, I find it helpful to to see their self-evaluation.
Hold on though, Mike. I mean, we're talking given two weeks. That's like barely two weeks for him to get his self-evaluation done.
Right, and and that's, and that's why I mentioned it is, you know, it is possible to do. Certainly, you can do an evaluation of 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 an employee without seeing their self-evaluation. I personally, I like to see someone's self-evaluation. I don't let it influence how I evaluate the person, but I find it helpful.
Yeah, I I personally won't do one without a self-evaluation.
I I agree. I completely agree.
I wouldn't do one without a self-evaluation.
Is it possible for me to?
You can, you can wait until May.
Yeah, everything could be due and then we could just review it after.
I didn't want to hold up the process. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would want to sit with you anyways before you did it.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
All right, so I think if I, you know, I'll work on the self-evaluation during April and then have it ready. And then you can, you can do it in May.
Okay.
I do think Chris should do his evaluation before he leaves, just because if anything's going with the average, he's not a member. So I just think you should complete it before you leave.
As long as he gets off his duff and gets his self-evaluation done.
Well, we got almost what, to the first couple of days in May?
I got a month. I got a month to get it figured out. I'll do.
I mean, and Mike, if you want to, and if you want to send it to me, I don't mind. I sit in front of a computer all day. I don't mind, you know, multitasking and kind of doing what I, what we've talked about and what I, what I.
We pay Mike Jones to be the HR director. He can do it.
All right. I know he was so busy with the union stuff, he didn't, you know.
He's got that done.
He's done now.
I guess what I'd like to know, are there are there any big, so the wording in here is is exactly what you said as the goals? And I think that's probably a good way to go. You're evaluating on the goals that you set.
Perfect.
I think Leah's suggestion a year ago.
In my opinion, it has to match the goals. Yes.
So I think that makes it easy. If there are any ma- major changes other than, you know, you need something added or like as far as how it's tabulated, you know, e- easy to do the Excel, easy to just do paper. And I'm happy to, now that we've got the five contracts done, I'm happy to work with you, Leah. I'm happy if you do it. I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, I think I would just have like a, like maybe set this up, maybe with a table in it and there's, you know, the number, the goal, the goal, the comment below it, and then like a column all the way over to the right, you know, with with the rating and then it averages right there.
We already have that set up for them when we did the mid mid-year review.
Yeah, but it's not not in what we have here. This is just a Word document. Yeah.
So I guess, so the question is, what question I had, so that's that's fine.
What about my?
I think if you had, so if you had the form that we used the mid-year review, we could just use that and adapt that. But.
But not changing the wording. So mid-year review, that wording changed.
I understand. Yeah, I I that that part I get. But but you know, the results were essentially the same, so that's not, that's not an issue. But but I do think, though, the question I'd want to get from you is, but the answer I'd like to get from you all is what kind of form do you want my self-evaluation to take? Do you want it just to 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 fill out the the Excel spreadsheet form? Or would you like me to do a narrative or do both?
I don't care.
Personally, I would be follow the same format.
Okay.
Yeah, and and even expand. I mean, there's, there's three lines here, you know, I mean, a lot of this from your perspective, and I I've read your other self-evaluations, you go into a lot of detail. So however you end up doing it, you know, um, you know, I would say you could probably do it. I mean, either in a Word or an Excel, but.
I do like Mike's conclusion section too, though, so if we do go back to the mid-year thing, if we can just carry that over.
Yeah. All right, so do we have to vote on this, Mike?
No.
No, we'll just come up with it, uh.
This is just a fact finding mission.
Right.
Yeah, we're good. I'm good with three being satisfactory.
If the board was fine with Leah and I taking this instrument and turning it into the tool that you want to use, and then we say that the timeline is, you know, that once that's done, we give Bill two weeks and then we set a, one of your meeting dates, um, say, a week before a meeting date in May. Um, that would give me enough direction to to move and and get it ready for you.
Not to be difficult, but I technically still have to agree to that, too. The process, it says in my contract that I'm supposed to agree with the process. So far, everything has been fine. I've not, I'm not agreeing with, I don't have any issue with it.
And I'm comfortable with you and Leah coming up with a template.
But you're talking the process?
Right.
That we now have to check with the AG on and all that, or, I mean, that.
Yeah, that process, I, you know, you know, we we reviewed that process two years ago. And I thought that the the AG's office had made it abundantly clear to us that it was okay for the chairman not to accept the the reviews, but to review them after they had all come in to a third party, which would be Mike. And and, you know, I don't have a problem if Sarah's going to do it. I don't really care.
Yeah, to me, opening the envelopes together and then creating the document together, that's what's not allowed. You know, it's more, you know, reviewing the.
And the question is, who does it then?
Yeah. It's, it goes into it in the Q and A. Just read the Q and A. It suggests who it should be and all that.
Okay, all right. So, but other than that, I'm comfortable with you helping Mike.
Okay.
Come up with the form.
I'll take a look at that.
Okay. All right, good. Ah, Mike, Assistant Town Manager's update.
Oh, boy. Okay, so that says 10 past 9, but I think.
Yeah, but it's closer to 10 past 10. It's actually 10 past 10.
So for that reason, I have a long list of things for you.
Can we?
But I'll pare it down. Um, so, uh, as mentioned earlier, um, we have been been busy since the last week of January up through today um, in negotiating five contracts. And I think we came out with very good contracts that were, you know, that were that were fair, both to to their taxpayers as well as to our employees. So I I do want to um, thank all of the the employees, the the negotiating teams that that um, uh, that that worked with me on this, uh, as well as Chief Grace, who sat in, and the police negotiations, and DPW Director Chris Gallagher, who sat in all the um, the DPW negotiations. Um, the one last comment on the on the the town manager goals, and that is that, and I've said this before, I think back in uh, last June. Um, I think it's, I want to give my hats off to this, to this board, because they're they're extraordinary. And you're not just setting the goals for the town manager. And you're not just setting the goals to evaluate him, you're setting the town's goals. And, you know, when you think of the, when you look at these four categories that you set, it's really important. You've you've set the compass for the town, and I think you've done it in an extraordinary way. Um, and so just my hats off in in that regard. Um, Marie was mentioned earlier uh, tonight when we talked about the the budgeting tool. And and I have to say, she's been a major part of our succession planning. And um, you know, we we kind of thought that, we were pretty sure of that when we hired her. And right along the way, she has reassured us that we have a good succession plan in place. And, you know, with that in mind, um, she has been promoted to be the Assistant Finance Director slash Director of Accounting. That came with a a small raise, much smaller than it should have been. For the responsibilities that she's taken on, but uh, so I'm really pleased that we have a succession plan for a very, very important department and um, and function in the town. Um, so just for everybody's uh, notice, our advisory committee meeting will be this Thursday. It's normally on Wednesday. It's this Thursday meeting. And I know they have a lot of important things to discuss, so just so everybody knows, it's Thursday this week.
They're still on Zoom, by the way, so it's fun.
Yep. And um, I just want to mention, because um, you know, we did spend in the last nine weeks, you know, negotiating and and, you know, it did come up over the last several weeks about what about all that money the the federal government's going to give us? And people want to know, am I going to get that in my, you know, in my raise sort of thing in the negotiation? And I just want to say that um, as as Bill mentioned and 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 Doc mentioned, uh, as we were on the call with with Congressman Auching.
Duncan Claus.
Auching Claus. Um, he really did reinforce that that money is for, um, is really for infrastructure. And so when I think of infrastructure, he also talked about, the congressman also talked about PFOS, which we really haven't heard about PFOS since the beginning of COVID, but PFOS hasn't gone away. It's still um, a very um, difficult thing. It's something that science hasn't well defined, but any way you slice it, this could be a very, very expensive proposition. So um, you know, I don't know when that gets addressed, but that's something that could fall under where some of that money comes from.
And I I do want to reiterate that, that we we do have a trace of it in one of the wells that we don't even use actively. It's 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 a well that um, it's it's only used as a backup well. So it's doesn't, it's not affecting any of the current drinking water supply that we currently have. So I want to be clear about that part of it. And and that, even though I don't think that was made abundantly clear last night, I think that we we really need to reemphasize that and uh, and and Chris can certainly give more detail on that. But we we do, the the reason we have three treatment plants now is because of of that, of that type of situation. But he's made it a clear, he's made it clear that if we were to treat PFOS, that's a whole new level of treatment, that's that's that the science on that is is still developing. And uh, and and so think about it, 20 pots. And so think about it, 20 parts per trillion. That's, it's even hard to even think about measuring that. So you wonder how far the science is going here and why, and if there really is the return on investment and the return on society in that respect. Are we really, what's the real gain there? So we think we have to think about that. That's not something for us that we're going to decide here, but it's going to be something that we could be on the paying end of that if we're not careful.
And the national standard for that is, or the maximum is 70 parts per trillion. Massachusetts has further defined it as 20 parts per trillion. And we had one of our four treatment plants, you know, well show up at 21 parts per trillion. Again, like Bill said, one we're not using. But something, it's not something we need to buy next year because we don't even know how to do it. But it's something we need to think about down the future. You know, there's going to be some costs there. Other facilities, as I think about infrastructure, we know at some point we've got to do something with a DPW facility. There is work needed down there. We have a laundry building that we know we've been talking about. Not huge, but at this point, it's $150,000. So it's something we got to address at some point. So, and the last thing I want to say is that, you know, as far as, I think Leah made a good point, you know, they, you know, maybe the motions should go to all members. Typically, they haven't because I think people don't care. I mean, usually it's the clerk of the board that is really interested. But I think if that's something all the board members want to see, then we can definitely do that. And then at least you see that Christina works really hard to put out all the options, you know, no matter what the board decides, it has the tools it needs to kind of pivot on whichever way it goes. So we can definitely do that. She worked really hard to provide you that and will certainly get it to everybody. And that's all I have, thank you.
And I think we always used to do that. I think Stephanie's just comfortable with paper, so we got away from that. So I think we just got to get back to board docs being, you know.
It was always under, the motion was always.
Yeah, it's there, yep, yep.
Yeah, and I just want to say, you know, just publicly thank you to Christina because I am one that would rather read than scroll and I like to make notes. And she's, she's been more than accommodating to help me with that.
Six years ago, when I was clerk, we had to write our own motions.
Right, well, then, yeah, why are we, if we're not using board docs, let's save the money.
We've evolved, we've evolved, yeah. No, but the point is, is what I'm thinking, that we could just put it into board docs. We don't have to just.
We always used to, yeah, we always did. I mean, I was clerk.
We could just scan and put it in the board.
The issue with that, the reason that it's different a little bit and things aren't included is because I'm putting those motions in and having to put them into board docs and then printing them out. It's the whole process, so that's.
No, but I think just one document, the similar document you give, you give Stephanie, you take that and scan that and it's available.
Or, I mean, quite honestly, we don't know who our clerk will be next year. Maybe they'll be comfortable with board docs. We can just get back to having board docs be the system of record. And then there is no signed paper and all that, yeah.
In tradition, it'll be Seth.
And Seth's very comfortable with the computer.
How do you prefer?
So I'm hoping this is a short-term problem.
Well, for Christina, it's like Ed preferred paper. I mean, she even does it nice and big writing for me because Ed liked it big and I'm like, I'll take it big, you know? I'm like, that's fine, too, so.
But it's a lot of extra work for Christina, so just recognizing that.
Bill?
So I'm going to be very brief, because I think I spoke about, I spoke enough tonight and I've also spoken about virtually everything else that I wanted to raise. But I did want to mention that the Board of Health got a nice grant the other day that Matt put through and for another $17,000. And I'm going to be interested to see where the grant, grant tally comes in at the end of this year because it's been pretty incredible when you think about.
He just like the grant queen.
Yeah, Paige and Mike and Keller, and, you know, even Rob for that matter, Rob Verdon, the grants that are coming through. And Chris has picked up some money on a lot of things virtually across the board. So it's been a really good year for that, so I'm really grateful for it. And the school department grants have just been through the roof, too. So just want to say that, mention that, and thanks to Matt for doing what he's doing. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Jones.
All right, anything for a selectments update? No, we've already done action items, so.
The motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Good night, everybody. Thank you for your patience.